The meeting is called to order. Let's stand the flag salute.
I'll do that.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would just like to welcome our new mayor-elect to our meeting, Mr. Michael Melham. We wish you luck in his meeting. (APPLAUSE). Care to make any statements at this time?
I've been enough.
Well, can you read the statement of certification in the meeting?
Yes, certification has been advertised. It is a sunshine ball.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Viera.
Here.
Mr. Seeley. This is in Alvarado.
Here.
Captain McKenna. Mr. Conning.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mrs. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Corbett.
Here.
Mr. Bowe. Mr. Sinabria. Miss Reckow.
Here.
All business. There's nothing to be brought up. We have, this is a special meeting. We have an application before the board. And I'm going to recuse myself to avoid any conflict as I own property within 200 feet.
Hi, the application before is the board this evening is P B twenty thirteen dash oh two proposing to construct the Wawa with the gas station service station on the property. Ready?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Michael Olivero with the offices of Chiesa, Chehenian, and Giannamassia appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is the property that is owned by the applicant, eleven Franklin Developer LLC. We're here this evening seeking preliminary and final site plan approval for the construction of a one-story retail convenience store with associated fuel sales at the property located at eleven Franklin Avenue. It's designated as block two three zero one, lot one. This board has already approved a major subdivision. This is part of that subdivision, and the lot that we're speaking about this evening is the proposed lot one point oh two. We have not yet perfected the subdivision. There are some issues that need to be resolved prior to the recordation of the maps and the perfection of the subdivision. What we're asking to do this evening, as I said, is to obtain preliminary and final site plan approval for this convenience store. There are five arriances that are being requested this evening, all pertaining to signage. It's my intention to call three witnesses this evening. I have the engineer for the project Brett Stappinett, who will provide testimony with regard to the operation of the facility, and also will provide engineering testimony. We have the architect, who will give you insight with regard to the actual configuration of the building and the fuel pumps and this canopy and those kinds of things. And then finally, we have our traffic engineer, which will give you the explanation with regard to the impact on traffic in this particular neighborhood. Having said that, if I may, I'd like to call Mr. Captain.
Mike, just before you start, I saw one of the board, and I told Patty that I have a traffic engineer coming to represent the board, John Jar. He's just run a little bit late, but, and he's been in contact with the applicant with his concerns, so.
Okay, Mike.
And he'll testify regarding his May ninth report. Thank you. Would you like him to speak?
Yes. Will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your first and last name?
First name is Brett B R E T T. Last name is Stappinett, S K A P I N E T T. Thank you.
Mr. Stappinett, if you could, please, give the board the benefit of your educational background, of the licenses that you hold, the number of years that you've practiced engineering, and if your license is current.
Sure. I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I'm currently a director of dynamic engineering consultants located at two forty-five Main Street in Chester, New Jersey. I am licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license still is valid, as well as professional planner within the state of New Jersey.
And I testified before the board on the previous application of the site.
I ask you to accept this next question. Mr. Captain, if you could, please, give the board the benefit of the location of this site, the history or a brief history of what's located there and what we're proposing to do this evening.
Sure. And just so it's clear, I see the microphone was there. I'm going to talk here to the board, too. Is that okay? Am I loud enough?
Are you even here?
Fine.
Come on, come on.
Just as long as the audience can hear you.
Yep. I'm usually pretty loud, so.
Good.
So, just to orient the board and the public to the side of the application, I'm going to present the first exhibit, which is a colorized version of the aerial map, which is contained within the site plan set.
Counsel, just mark that A one.
Okay. So, A one is entitled aerial map exhibit with a preparation date of eight ten two thousand seventeen. Again, it's a colorized version of the aerial map, which illustrates the site. It's about eighteen point seven acres. It's block twenty three oh one, lot one. It's located along South Franklin Avenue, which is along the bottom of the sheet and going forward. South Franklin Avenue will be along the bottom of the sheet for the other exhibits, and Mill Street, which is off to the northern end of the site. Again, eighteen point seven acres. You know, obviously, I've talked to the previous application, but I'll give a little by way of history. The site was last used by Roche Pharmaceutical, which had been on the property since nineteen seventy-five. Prior to that, it had various uses, actually going back to the early eighteen hundreds, including a copper manufacturing plant on the site, which was located on the northern part of the site. You can see in the center of the site, the location of the former building, which is about a fifty thousand square foot building and associated parking and improvements. The access driveways, there's an access drive along South Franklin Avenue, which is a general location of improved driveway as part of the previous site plan. We're located within a redevelopment zone, which permitted both the self-storage facility and the pharmacy, which was approved by the board back at the end of last year, and is also permits the retail store with associated gas use on this property as well.
And as part of that application, I believe it was in December, the subdivision was approved as well, creating four separate lots. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I'm going to move to the next exhibit, just to kind of just go over that briefly.
And if we had more details, could you?
That'd be fine, Counsel. Thank you.
So, A two is entitled overall site plan rendering, which has a preparation date. Again, noted of eight ten two thousand seventeen. Well, it was actually prepared and updated by my office yesterday, so I just wanted to make a note of that. This rendering illustrates the site, overall site, again, eighteen point seven acres, Franklin Avenue along the bottom of the sheet, Mill Street off to the northern end. And you can see the self-storage facility, which is about a hundred thousand square feet, a four-story building, the pharmacy located on the corner of about thirteen thousand square feet. That was approved by this board. Those are on two separate lots. One point oh one is the pharmacy. One point oh three was the self-storage. And then we created lot one point oh two as part of the subdivision, and then the remaining lot one point oh four, which is, takes up the majority of the southwestern portion of the site. As you can see on this exhibit, we also illustrate the retail and gas facility, the proposed Wawa located on the, towards the southeastern end of the site. That takes up about one point nine five acres, does lot one point oh two.
Now, can you turn that toward us so we can see that looks like it'd be very big?
Yes, oh yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And with regard to the large parcel that we're talking, or we call parcel D, there are no plans at this point in time for a redevelopment?
There are at this time, yes. So, just briefly, because the board and the public couldn't see it, oriented again with Franklin Avenue on the bottom, here's Mill Street, the overall parcel with the self-storage facility that was previously approved, the pharmacy previously approved, and then the subject application for tonight, the retail and gas, Wawa located on lot one point oh two.
And what's the one on the right hand side?
Excuse me?
You're going to have a time to...
There will be a portion where the public will have the opportunity to ask any questions.
Now, Mr. Stappinett, before you get into the actual details of this particular site, are you familiar with the operation of the Wawa?
I am, yes.
And if you could, please, could you give the board the benefit of your knowledge with regard to how a Wawa would operate?
Sure. Maybe before I step into that, I want to do is I'll just give a brief overview of the layout of the facility, and then I'll jump right into the, to the operations. So, the proposal, and I'll mark this exhibit, A three. A three is entitled site plan rendering with a preparation date of five nine two thousand eighteen. Now, this is a blow-up of the Wawa. So, we have a five thousand five hundred eighty-five square foot building, the retail portion of the facility, which is proposed with fifty parking spaces surrounding it. There are parking spaces on, at the front. Just for reference, I'll be talking about the front of the building as the portion that faces towards the canopy, the gasoline portion or operations. So, the front of it, towards the canopy, has parking towards Franklin Avenue, as well as to the rear, which faces towards the pharmacy, parking around the building, and then parking spaces that face towards Franklin Avenue and towards the west, towards the main access drive that services, runs through the middle of the site, servicing each one of the uses proposed. The, then there are, in front of that building is the gas canopy that has eight multi-product dispensers, or M P Ds, which provides for sixteen fueling positions. And above that is the area canopy over the top, typical you would see in most fueling facilities out there. And the, there will be two, sorry, in each row, between each one of the dispensers, there will be a proposed kiosk where, obviously, where transactions or the workers will have, be able to situate themselves, especially during bad weather, and so forth. The proposal, now, from an access standpoint, the main access drive at Franklin Avenue is off to the southern end of the building, and that access drive is where it was previously proposed under the previous application for the pharmacy and for the self-storage. That intersection, however, is proposed now to contain a new signal, which is under design, and will be talked about further by our traffic engineer. That driveway has also been modified slightly based on the previous approval to provide separate right turn and left turn lanes exiting the site, whereas there was a single inbound lane and exiting lane. So, that was a change to that drive. We've also added access driveways off of the access drive to the pharmacy, to the rear of the Wawa in the northeast corner, and then a separate access drive off the main driveway through the center of the site, just off the southwestern corner of the building. And each, that driveway, each one of those drives will be full movement driveways, as well as the access drive that ties into the driveway to the center, to the southern end of the site. So, from an operation standpoint, this facility takes on deliveries for different items at different intervals during the course of a week. If you're looking at milk products, that would typically happen about three times a week, roughly, through a Wawa vehicle, which would pull up to the loading area located on the western side of the building. I noted before, parking only on three sides. That western side contains a dedicated loading area for the facility. There would also be fresh groceries, which is typically done roughly four, maybe five times a week via tractor trailer. And that tractor trailer would, again, park itself in that loading area. There's more than enough length and width for that vehicle to enter and park itself in that location. And that's typically scheduled in off-hour time. It's usually not happening during the peak hours of operation, in the morning or evening. You then have other vendors, which might bring soda, candy. They're typically going to pull up in smaller box trucks, which, again, would utilize that area, and those typically are happening off-hours, along with then the fueling of the facility. And that occurs, again, via a tractor trailer, which would enter in through either the main driveway at the signal or off of the driveway at the back end of the pharmacy. And if it were to enter into the site, it would circulate around to the proposed fuel tanks, which are located on the western side of the canopy, interior to the site. Those, it would pull up, typically those fueling trucks dump off on the passenger side, so it's situated in that manner where we bank off, and then it would leave the facility by circulating through around the site and back out to the main drive aisle. All right? The truck would not be exiting out through that driveway closest to the intersection. Trash pickup, it usually occurs roughly three times a week, may happen more or less depending on the activity in the store. That's picked up, that trash is taken out of the building and brought to the trash compactor, which is located within a masonry enclosure located in the northwest corner of the site, again, off the street and back behind the Wawa building. So, that's typically how loading and unloading takes place. In total, Wawa employs somewhere between forty and fifty people in various shifts at this facility, with typically twelve to thirteen employees on the initial shift during the beginning of the day.
And, Mr. Stappinett, with regard to the parking, you did reference fifty parking spaces.
I did.
Technically, there are sixty-six because of the spaces at the fuel pumps. Is that correct?
Yeah, you could count those. I mean, as far as actual parking spaces, ten-foot by twenty-foot stalls, are, those are painted and striped around the building, as I mentioned earlier, but yes. At each one of the positions, it does allow for sixteen additional vehicles to pull up, so that would then be the sixteen.
And then, you mentioned hours, or at least you're speaking about the hours that the deliveries are scheduled to be made. The redevelopment plan is specific with regard to the hours of operation.
That's correct.
And it's the applicant's intention to abide by the terms of redevelopment plans for the hours of operations.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct, and as I understand it, would be the, from the, period from five a.m. to one a.m.
If you could, then, can you go to the actual site itself and talk about this specific?
Sure. Just a little bit more detail with regard to the site plan. Around the building, there are proposed sidewalks along the front of each one of the head-on parking spaces, our bollards, to protect vehicles from approaching any further into the wall. There are walkways and interior to the site that we actually have made adjustments to, with the adjustment to the driveways, as I mentioned earlier, so you can see the interior sidewalks running through the site off of Franklin Avenue. And then, from a stormwater management perspective, under, so there's a, basically, the stormwater from this site will be collected through curb inlets that will then draw stormwater to the northeastern end of the site. If I refer back to A two, if the board recalls, we had proposed a basin on the lower end of the site at the intersection of Mill and Franklin, and, our intention to bring water to that site, to that area of the site from the Wawa, has been designed, it's actually part of the review for D E P. D E P is under, has jurisdiction over the review of that area, as I testified under the previous application, and that, that review has been finalized and the application, or the permit is about to be issued on that. The, so, utility-wise, we had talked about earlier in the previous plan, how utilities will be brought into this site and looped through this site, particularly water, sewer, gas, and electric. That's our intention to tie off of those utilities from the interior of the site. We will have no new connection out to Franklin Avenue with the loops of those utilities coming in. We will then tie off of those to service the proposed gas and retail services or building. Landscaping, you can see in this plan that beyond the landscaping that was approved for the self-storage and for the pharmacy, we've added additional plantings in this pad around the building, sorry, out around the perimeter of the site primarily. Out in front, a continuous row of deciduous and evergreen shrubs. We have proposed trees planted around the outer perimeter of the site as well, a mix of evergreens and deciduous trees, upwards of a hundred and fifty-two shrubs, a hundred and forty miscellaneous plantings, and eleven trees. From a lighting perspective, we are matching similar, to the fixtures that were approved around the pharmacy and the self-storage. Aerialite fixtures are going to mimic those. There are LED fixture, about twenty-one feet in height. It's a shoeback type fixture that will direct the light downward and minimize spillage out away from the fixture. It will be directed where it's intended to. As a result, if you look at our lighting plan, we're not proposing any light spillage out across the property line or across Franklin Avenue, which is really the closest property line or, you know, to off-site uses. The, there will also be lights underneath the canopy. There are also a LED fixture, and these are flush with the bottom of the canopy. You've probably seen one, fixtures which hover below the base of the canopy, and you can see them, it affects, you know, it does affect drivers. That's not the case here. They're flush, and they're intended to direct light direct down, as intended towards the area which are, where cars are being serviced.
And then we have trash, if you could go through that just briefly?
Yeah, I mentioned that before, as respect to the trash delivery and how often per week, roughly three times a week, where the trash will be picked up from the refuse area. Every day, though, the containers, which will be situated around the building, as well as in the areas underneath the canopy, they're picked up every day, and they're dumped into that trash enclosure. So, the trash on-site is serviced on a daily basis.
And there's a specific trash enclosure that's hidden from the public?
That's right. It's situated back off the, as far back off the road essentially as possible. And again, it's a masonry enclosure with gates, so it will, would not have an impact with respect to the view of the motor and public.
Now, lastly, with regard to signage, if you could, please, just briefly discuss signage.
Sure. We are proposing several signs, the building-mounted signs, there will be two of them, one of which we do require a variance, actually, each of which we require a variance for, for area, the, and height of the letters. There are ones right on the front and back, just above the entrances. They are at sixty-seven point seven square feet, where fifty square feet is allowed for your ordinance. The height of that sign also exceeds the allowable three feet. It's five, about five and a half feet for the total height of that sign. But if you look at the setup of the Wawa, and you take just the Wawa logo itself and the goose above it, the total area of that sign is actually fifty-two square feet in area, with the goose being raised above the letters, we have to take a full box around the sign per code. So, we're sort of getting hit with a bunch of blank area that's being counted as sign. If we take just the area of the sign itself, it's fifty-two square feet, so only two square feet over. And with the height of the letters, as you see with the architect brings up the rendering, you take a look, the Wawa is proportional to the front entrance, and obviously, the Wawa and the goose all together, that logo does, it's set in a manner where if we have a certain size, it's going to have a certain height. And if not, it's going to look out of character with any other sign that Wawa has put out there, and obviously, we're then looking for a deviation based on that height. With respect to the area, sorry, the freestanding sign out in front, it's a monument sign that's located out at the main driveway at the signal, and that sign, we're looking for a deviation of just under two square feet, about one point nine square feet over the allowable of forty-eight square feet. And the height is over with respect to the allowable. And, certainly one, certainly one, so, the, the height of that sign is seven point nine feet in height, where six foot is allowable. With respect to the height, we have a situation where it's along the roadway, and it's a monument sign, so we're not talking the freestanding sign that stands up typically fifteen, twenty feet in height. It's one, it's a monument sign that essentially has a three-foot base. And a driver's height, sitting in a car seat, in their seat, driving for a car, is roughly three, three and a half feet. So, we're essentially putting that sign up at a height where the bottom of it is right at driver's view. I think it's appropriate to be a bit higher, also with the changing grade that you have along the hill running along Franklin. So, we're asking for a little bit more height, but only one point nine feet above. And then, like I said, the area is just slightly more. If we, again, take the calculation of just the sign area for the pricing and for the Wawa itself, and not the background, it's actually about twenty-eight square feet in total. So, but again, that's not the way it's calculated per code, just for reference, but it's a, it's a small deviation, and again, I think the height is appropriate for this location.
I'm going to ask you to put your planner's hat on for a minute. Is there a, is there, is there a justification for the granting of the variances that we're asking for this evening, and is there any kind of detriment either to the zoning plan or to the overall area?
No, I mean, I think I partially talked to this, the key here being, especially with the ID sign, let's start that out front. It's traffic-related, we want to make sure that it's visible. Raising it up in height, I think, is definitely appropriate. We don't want it lower, so that it's in line with cars, so it can't be seen appropriately if it were way down at ground level to meet the six foot. As far as the area, it's de minimis increase, and really, it's just simply because of the calculation of the background that we have on that sign. If you look at the detail of sign, that background is, yes, proportioned to the area of the Wawa and the fueling letters, but also, we're trying to frame it with the base and the cap, and it just adds a little bit more area. So, we think that that, I think that that deviation, again, being de minimis, does not negatively impact the intention of the plan for the size sign as well as the height of sign for this, for this proposal. Then, as far as the building-mounted signage, you know, I talked to the proportions with regard to the building, also realized, too, that these signs do not face towards the roadway. They're, they're facing to the north and to the south. So, I think it's also appropriate to have slightly bigger sign there, and we're not asking for something extravagant. We're not coming to you and asking for double or more. I think that having it, when you, again, when you see the elevations, I think from a visibility standpoint, being where it's located off the road, having a slightly bigger sign would be appropriate, and again, not negatively impact what's intended in the ordinance.
So, there are a couple of review letters that were issued by the township on behalf of the township. If you could, please, have you had an opportunity to review those, and can you speak to the issues that we're can you speak to the issues that were raised in those?
I did, and for the most part, I'll start with the May 2nd letter from Mr. Harretts, to which I just have a few items highlighted, which I think, most of which I've already talked to already, so if you just want to run through those, I can just go through the specific ones that I should talk to, which number on page two, number two, under general comments, this was talking to the operations of the testimony regarding the proposed use of the facility, for number employees, hours of operation, deliveries, et cetera, and I talked to that already. Number three talks about testimony including a brief summary of the history of the property, environmental remediation, that was talked to at the last application, but maybe I can just give a very quick overview. I mentioned how the property essentially has been in use since the early 1800s, switching users, last really being Roche, which ceased operations in 2006, the buildings there were demoed in 2010, and obviously our client now controls the property and we're moving forward with, looking to move forward with continued use of the parcel. From an environmental standpoint, there has been some remediation done on what was called the upper tier, so towards the southern end of the property where the building's located, there's work, as you can see going by there, that's happening towards the northern end of the property. When we, once the EP permit is received, there's work in the area of the corner of Mill and Franklin, that once the permit is in hand, some soil removal will take place in that location as per the remediation plan intact or in place for the site. So that's simply, in simple terms, work has been ongoing and continues to happen to comply with the environmental remediation of the site. Then I'll move to item number four, I'll defer this to our traffic engineer, who talked about the operation of traffic, the impact of traffic as a result of the site proposal. Then number five talks about some minor modification to sidewalks and roadways, and I kind of talked about that, that's the change to the configuration of the driveway on the southern end of the proposed Wawa. And then, the driveway at the northeast corner was also shifted slightly to the south under the proposed, with the proposed Wawa, to better facilitate truck movements in and out. So, and essentially what happened was the northern face remained the same and the southern end was just widened a bit to better facilitate truck movements. Then item number six on page three talks about signage and the signs being proposed and the related variances. Moving on to number, page four, number nine talks about hours of operation for the proposed light fixtures. I mentioned the types of fixtures, essentially we have cutoffs, it's not going to have light spillage or impact adjacent properties. As far as our operation, we're going to adhere to obviously the hours of operation of the, as per the ordinance, from the 5:00 AM to 1:00. However, there will be lights that will remain on, because the intention that there may be employees in that period of time when the store is closed, it will still be on-site. So we do want to have lights remain on, we'll work with Mr. Harretts as necessary for a lighting plan for security during those four hours. Stormwater management on page five, number one, I went through the change that was made, essentially we're drawing stormwater to the northeastern end of the site, and we've expanded that area to take on that additional stormwater, that was proposed under the previous application for the self-storage and the pharmacy. And with that, I do not have any other comments, we agree to what Mr. Harretts on each of the remaining comments in his letter.
There's also a letter from CME associates, dated May 1st.
Yes, and with respect to the CME letter, essentially I just went through the signage, which really begins on, let's start on page six, number six, everything else above that is essentially just informational within the letter. So at page six, I've gone through the proposed signs and talked about how we believe that the variances we're requesting are justified. If we look to the bottom of page eight, there are four items, A, B, C, and D. Letter A would be talking about trash receptacle and how recycling is handled on-site. There is a recycling, not only the compactor, but there is also an area with a collection of recycling, Wawa does separate garbage and recycling, and that's also separated within the trash enclosure. Letter B pertains to the traffic study, and I'll leave that to Mr. Taylor. Letter C talks about the fact that we have excess parking, we do, 38 parking spaces are required for the Wawa, if we do the calculation based on the code, we're asked, we have 50 around there. And essentially comes down to is, first of all, Wawa dictates 50 parking spaces, they know how their site operates, and that's really the plan symbol of it, and they feel that 50 is a minimum to operate here, and that's including, that's not including the 16 parking stalls that was mentioned earlier underneath the canopy. I, you know, with this, we're controlling it with respect to stormwater, it doesn't create a major increase in previous coverage, and it provides some excess parking spaces for surrounding users as well, should that maybe used down the road. With respect to letter D, no details are, yes, no details are proposed for the future development, we noted that earlier, that we're not showing that we don't have any end-user at this point in time.
And finally, just to reinforce with regard to the bulk variances, there are no bulk variances that we're asking for this evening, there was a bit solely to signage.
That's absolutely correct, yes.
I have nothing further, Mrs. Cadence.
Does anyone have any questions? Do you have something, yeah, Mr. Walsh?
Of course. When you first introduced Exhibit A2, you said it was recently updated, what was the change, how significant are they, when were they made?
It was just, it's just, it's actually just the date on there, and just cleaning up the color rendering to match what was being presented in A3, that's all.
Okay, you're not throwing us?
No. Oh, no, 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 no. A2, was represented in A2 and A3 are exactly the same.
My other question, you said the stormwater is going to be moved over to the Mill Street side.
Yes.
How does that coincide with the possible widening of Mill Street?
There was, in the previous application, there was an allotment for a 10-foot proposed widening along Franklin and Mill, so that does not impacted by this. The improvements that are taking place for the basin are outside of that. So should there be any future widening, it would not impact the proposed basin.
Do you know what the status of the widening is?
I will defer discussion with respect to traffic to Mr. Taylor.
Are you, well, so here is the architect?
No, we have an architect that will testify next.
And you'll go over security?
Yes.
Any other comments?
I just, also, I found it interesting originally that your retention bases were going to be under, and, you know, one of the things, I really glad you made that modification, because when you have a retention base that was also planned, there was a plan that it would also be into the parking lot of pharmacy as well, we know that those basins eventually can compromise in the long, not immediately, but down the road, the stability of the parking lot is affected by putting a retention basin under it is different than just putting a storm drain. So therefore, the water flow is of drainage is going to flow down under, in effect, if it's been moved, how is, how is, how is the flow being, the drainage flow being addressed so that it does go?
There are, so we obviously know heading from the intersection of Mill up Franklin, it goes uphill, right? There's a cheetah grate up to a peak at about the driveway where the signal is proposed. We're taking that stormwater, it's going to be collected via inlets and piping underground, it's going to essentially run along the front of the pharmacy and then tie into that basin. So it's actually very simple and then making the adjustment for that basin was much cleaner.
That answers my question on that one, and yeah, I did, I did also observe, but I realized, especially with your explanation, I originally saw an April 9th date when you mentioned a May date as the updated plan, correct?
April, that would be our site plan set, right?
All right, right through, yes.
Yeah, this is, this is just, these were the rendered exhibits though, which were, which were prepared for presentation this evening, so it has the newer date of May. But it's based on the submitted site plans.
And your, your flow from the, from the pumps, as the entry and flow of customers coming in to, to get gas?
Okay.
So it will essentially be off of Franklin, and, and to make a right towards the pumps?
Well, yeah, one of the main, there is the main access drive, and yes, someone coming in would, yes, be able to pull in, obviously as they're pulling and identify where, depending on what side they're fueling, you know, from what side of their car, and identifying what might lane might be open, they could either pull in, make a left, and pull into a stall or pull in, travel around in a counterclockwise position and get into, you know, a stall to the west if they wanted to.
I'm familiar with your, your Wawa installation in Garfield, is it, up across the river?
Okay, I'm actually not familiar with that.
Okay. And so I, I'm familiar with the lighting under the pumps that Wawa uses, and it is different in a positive way, and I agree that that lighting should not negatively, shouldn't have a negative impact, especially the fact that this is going to go sideways, and I was thinking about the effect on residents on either side, but the main, the main light will seem to reflect to the south, yes?
Really, I mean?
In general, when you have?
It's going to, it's going to be underneath the canopy, we're actually really not, during the light?
But anyone except for the view from Franklin, otherwise you're going to see it as you're coming from north and driving north.
Correct.
It's not going to affect that area.
It will not.
Anybody else?
I have a quick question. You mentioned about several different types of deliveries that are going to be coming in a lot. I know you have a loading zone, I guess on the west end of the building?
Yes.
You mentioned like several different deliveries at different times, is there going to be a delivery schedule? Because what happens if we have multiple trucks showing up at the same time? I'm concerned about accidents in the parking lot where people being impatient, waiting for trucks to move and driving around and not being able to?
It will be scheduled, particularly between, for larger vehicles, you know, we have two different types of semi-trailers that might come in, so we won't have more than one truck, correct?
And I'm not sure if you can answer, I think Mr. Walsh mentioned, someone's going to talk about the security measures for the, since you're going to be basically have somebody there 24 hours a day, that's not for you or for someone?
Not for me.
The architect will, that's right.
Just to back up on our, on our deputy chief's question with that, when it comes to the big trailers, what is the length of unloading time normally on your major trailer?
For the, for the in-store, really for either, you're talking about an hour tops, because we're typically to unload?
Because we certainly wouldn't want, we wouldn't want a truck idling for a length of time, because that sound could carry.
Understood.
Any else?
Do they have an emergency generator, do they use a generator at all?
I don't believe there is one here, but I cannot defer that to the architect.
Okay. Any other questions? I'd like to open up to the public, now Mr. Walsh?
Do you have the hours that the tractor trailer could make delivery? It's not going to be 1:00 o'clock in the morning, you'll not want?
Again, it's going to be, it's usually scheduled off-hours, you know, during the day, but again, could it happen later at night? It potentially could, today on the route, but typically not that late.
Okay, we'd like to open up to the public right now, if you would keep your comments separate from questioning, just the questions right now. Do I have any questions from the public? Mr. Brantantoni?
There are two questions, I think you mentioned earlier.
I'm sorry. I want to second you up to, since I'm not in show. State your name and address, please?
Please, yes.
Thank you. Frank T. F. R. A. N. T. A. N. T. O. N. I.
And Jess?
129 Mount Prospect Avenue.
Thank you.
Just questions at this time, please.
Yeah, you stated the site was 18.7 acres, is that correct?
That's correct.
I wanted to, it was about 10 acres, I think, so my notes are the other one.
No, it's 18.7.
The entire site?
The entire site, yes.
And I think Mr. Walsh answered my question, but is the widening of Mill Street going to be done in conjunction with this project?
No, there's work at the signal, but no widening proposed with respect to, in conjunction with this part of the application.
The Mill Street widening is not going to be done?
There's no proposed widening as part of this application.
Any other questions? Mr. Mafucci?
Victor Mafucci, M A F F U C C I, 61 Continental Avenue. Will you also be pumping diesel?
There will be diesel fuel.
Both for automobiles and trucks?
Not for larger trucks, that's not, the setup is not for large trucks, no, or tractor trailers, it would be for cars.
I don't recall if I missed a meeting, but there's a second driveway going out to Franklin Avenue, or coming in from Franklin Avenue?
There are, no, the proposed driveways along Franklin Avenue are no different than what was approved under the previous application, other than the fact that we made an adjustment to the width and for the one at the northern end of the proposed Wawa, and at the southern end, we also increased the width, particularly to provide separate right and left turn lanes at the signal, those are the only changes.
So there are two driveways to Franklin Avenue?
There are two driveways, as originally approved.
I only quote one, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, please.
Judy Ward, W A R D, 44 Montgomery Place in Belva, on Lot 12, Block 2301. So there's no, there's no driveway at all on Mill Street for any of this?
There is a driveway on Mill Street which was approved as part of the original plan, which will remain, and that is the full movement driveway located in the northwestern end of the site, that does not change.
Can you see that man, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I can.
That does not change. All of our improvements are centered in the area located where my hand is now, in the southeastern end, everything else is as previously approved.
Okay, well, since I got certified now several times and the meetings were canceled, I missed that, so I'll just, a little, have a couple more questions about that particular site. How far down from Montgomery Place will that driveway be?
Can I give you an approximate?
Yeah, that's fine.
About 250 feet away, so 250 feet down from Montgomery Place is the beginning of that driveway.
And what's between that driveway and the backyards?
Well, in the area on the, along that western end, there's landscaping and berming taking place there. So the grade goes up, and then you'll see, you see the continuous row of trees, as well as additional trees behind it that are being planted.
And the other thing I'm concerned with are the hours of operation for the gas station and what Walgreens, are they 24-hour operations?
No, we, as I testified earlier, we're looking at the hours of operation for the redevelopment plan, which is 5:00 AM to 1:00 AM.
Close enough, okay, thank you.
Is it also fence going on the rear property line?
I believe so.
There's landscaping plus a fence going on.
There's also fence.
Before the next witness, because they're about an hour apiece.
Whatever, whatever the board requires.
Give you a few minutes, okay?
Sure, sure. Thanks.
So closing the public questions, if this boy is going to take a 10-minute break, five-minute break?
About three minutes you need, I think.
Sure, sure.
We'll give our important little wake-ups.
Thank you.
And your next witnesses?
We'll have the architect, which shouldn't be very long anymore.
I need a motion, Mr. Oliveri, do you want to bring up your next witness?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to call the architect, Richard Luke.
Good evening.
Will you raise your hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the test when you're about to give the, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your first and last name?
Richard Luke L. U. K. E.
Thank you.
Mr. Luke, if you could please give the board the benefit of education, background, the licenses that you hold, have you testified before this or other boards, and is your architecture license current?
Yes. So I went to school at University of South Florida, in Tampa, Florida, I'm practicing architect, I've been licensed since 2011, and I've been approved as an expert witness for jurisdictions such as Cranford, Oakland, Union, and Maplewood. I'm a licensed architect with a current license in New Jersey, but also set in other states and the surrounding area.
Will accept, will accept, it's good to have you.
Mr. Luke, if you could please, you're going to discuss the building itself, the interior, the design, et cetera, if you could please, I think the board's going to fit.
We'll start with the, with the building.
Yeah, can we have that marked, A4?
And if you could just say it, please, 54.
So we'll start with the building, but I'll preface that with the building architecture and the canopy, the gas canopy, have similar elements that are carried throughout, so that you have a uniformity between the two structures. Having said that, we have a general building of 500, or 5,585 square feet. Overall dimensions, approximately 85 by 65 feet. We have a slightly unique Wawa here, offering two tower elements, giving an entry to the front and the back of the building, which is unique, and also carrying brick throughout. We've got two types of brick on this building. There's a primary, which is called tavern, and a secondary called fieldstone. The fieldstone is used around the logo and the sign elements to give it a little more contrast. Another element that we have is the wainscot, which is a stone veneer, a manufactured stone veneer that's carried around the entire building. You can see that on all four sides. Another element which is characteristic to Wawa is the standing seam metal roof. This one's called a Dutch seam metal roof. Part of this design, part of the elements are really to carry a quasi-residential feel for the building, so that it fits into a multitude of different areas, but it softens it. It doesn't feel very industrial, doesn't feel very, you know, retail-centric. It's, it's a nice mix that it fits into neighborhoods such as yours. Other elements that you'll have, the storefront, which is a clear anodized glaze storefront. This is all transparent. The only thing that is not a straightforward clear transparency would be the right side elevation, which has a gray tint to it, and also has interior solar shades to it that can be adjusted if the sun gets too bright for the interior occupants. We could, if there are no questions on these particular elevations, I can show you the, the gas canopy. I take it this will be A5?
Yes.
Along with the gas canopy, you'll see, also see elevations for the trash compound on this exhibit. Like I mentioned before, elements such as the brick have been carried through onto the columns of the canopy, as well as the standing seam metal roof, same color. And the trim color, white, is also carried throughout both the building and the canopy. In the state of New Jersey, we are required to have the kiosks, so there are four of those located intermittently. Trash compound, same situation. We've got similar materials carried throughout. We've got the brick with the cultured stone veneer. Again, trim and gate apparatus is a white PDC. PDC is very low hassle, maintenance-free, and sturdy material that Wallace found. Works well for these enclosures. Just to address a few concerns that were brought up earlier, I believe security was one item that was brought up. From the architectural standpoint, I can tell you that there are numerous closed-circuit television cameras around this building and canopy associated with it and on the interior of the store. One thing, if you've ever been to a newer Wawa that you've noticed, is a very evenly lit canopy area, the gas canopy and the surrounding store, all very well-lit to make sure that there is full visibility by the occupants and they can see what's going on. Those are the primary functions that, that I can talk about with regard to the architecture. I didn't know if there were any other specific questions that you had. The transparency that's provided on the building in terms of all the windows, which are more than you would see in a typical gas station, also provides a lot of supervision to the site itself from the interior of the building, so the employees can see that.
With, with regard to the security issue, there's, the store itself or the facility itself will be closed four hours a day, but there will be employees on-site reloading things of that nature. So there will be a presence on-site at all times.
Correct. Most Wawas are operational, even if they're not, guests coming into the store, they're operational in some capacity. By the employees.
I don't think I have any other questions for the architect. Oh, you know, I'm sorry, just one other. If you could just briefly describe the interior as it's proposed. I think we had any discussion about the interior.
Sure, I can give you a brief overview of the circulation. And then one other thing that was mentioned was a generator. There is no generator on-site, however, hookup for an emergency generator is provided. So it can easily be brought. There's a service that Wawa uses in an emergency. This third party brings generators to any sites affected, whether it be a hurricane or something of that nature. They would deliver them to the site with an easy hookup that's prepared just for that reason. The interior of the store, I guess the best way to, to go about it for this particular store, there's a front and back insurance which are in alignment here. These are the two tower elements that you can see on the plan. Most of the store is circulating around this element that is affectionately referred to as a nose, which is where your hoagies are prepared. So there are several stations there for the attendants used to prepare hoagies, along with a fresh and quick grab island for helping your snacks. Along with that are typical shelving for merchandise items such as chips and snacks. And a lot of what you see around the back of this store is service areas because of the fresh prepared foods, different drink options, there's a lot of cold storage. So a lot of the areas around the back where you don't have windows, it's because there's coolers and other necessary functions being performed there in terms of food prep. I will note again, in terms of transparency, there are windows so that it's not just for the employees, which the employees have a section of window here for their convenience when they're taking breaks, also for the guests, there are windows on multiple sides. So it's a very pleasant interior atmosphere.
And one last question, I guess, the roof mechanicals?
All screens. So the parapet that you see here, for all intents and purposes, it's approximately the same distance between these two pieces of trim. The roof does slope, but approximately five feet is what you get all around. This is an issue that everyone is concerned about. Everyone wants the mechanical screened, and all the equipment and mechanicals are on the rooftop. And while it's taken great, we all have taken great pains to make sure that they're screened from distance. There is one larger unit, but it's typically behind the tower element, so it's very well screened. Also worth mentioning that the tower element is treated on all four sides. So if you were to look at the back of one of these towers, you're getting the same materials that you get on the other side. So it looks complete.
Thank you, nothing further, Mr. Walsh.
Is any of questions from this board?
I'm sorry, Mr. Luke.
Mr. Walsh?
Two questions. On your floor plan, you have big entrances and exits in both the front and the rear?
Yes.
But your island checkout is only in the front. Does that cause any possibility of problems? Someone coming in the back, taking stuff off the shelf, and just leaving it?
Not really. As you see on the plan in front of you, it's immediately adjacent to where you have sandwiches being prepared. This move, this area, if there's any area in the store which has a lot of employee activity, it would be that area. And that's immediately adjacent to it. So I haven't heard of any concerns with regard to that, but it is adjacent to a very actively used area where there should be employees most of the time.
Any other question? I, I have a, a-
I could.
I'm just wondering, is, the cameras are the only amount of security that you have planned?
Right. There are other devices within the facility which are more operationally driven in terms that, that the employees have access to. I would leave it up to Wawa if they wanted to kind of divulge what they, what those are for general public consumption. But I can tell you that there are-
So they're not hooked up to our, the police station?
I'm told they are, yes. There's an, there is an actual alarm that is hooked up to the police station and also monitored by Wawa corporate.
So you have no personnel that's gonna be there strictly for security?
Not that I'm aware of. Again, Wawa, from an operational standpoint, might be able to answer that question, but I'm not aware of that. I can tell you from a maintenance standpoint, which also helps with security in a lot of ways, there are checklists that have to be completed, both on the interior and exterior of the building in terms of maintenance and making sure that the facility, the site is safe. That has to be completed every shift, and it helps in that regard too. So not only, even if we weren't in the state of New Jersey, where there has to be attendance at the gas pumps, there are requirements for the employees to be on-site outside of the building. And you'll always know it because they're wearing their, their required safety equipment that they have to wear in terms of vests. So it's, they're very well-known, brightly colored for their safety and for everyone else's.
One thing with the cameras I was gonna ask, I know it might sound like an odd question, but cameras are gonna be inside and outside this store. And what type of cameras are they? I know, like, I'm a police officer, so when we deal with some cameras, we'll go and, God forbid, crime happens, we'll go back and then we, they'll only record, save that recording for a certain amount of time.
Right.
And if we don't get there right away, then we lose that recording. What, is it gonna be a camera where that, those recordings are gonna be there long enough that we're, say, the next day, or even later on that day, if we had to view it to help identify suspects or anything like that?
Unfortunately, I cannot answer that question. Not that I wouldn't define that information, I just don't know.
And I know you said you had some windows. Again, I've been to Wawas before, but I don't really remember. Is it a Wawa, the type of store that even though you have a lot of windows, are they gonna be blocking it with big advertisements and different type of logos and stuff like that, which would block, say, a patrol car that may be going through that parking lot that could see through those windows and see if something's going on inside?
Good question. Generally, no. So what you have in this particular instance where we've got the wainscot, that's approximately five feet above ground level. I can tell you from a design perspective and conversations with Wawa, they typically will try to avoid putting merchandise, you know, above this intermediate molyne that happens across the front. So for security reasons, you'll even see small decals in some locations that say to the employees, no merchandise above this point. And that's for that reason.
Just remind me of a good thing. What about, it's gonna be open 24, or not 24 hours, but for a long time, is there gonna be bank runs or money drop-offs? How does that work with Wawa?
That's an operational question.
Some of other businesses, they, you know, make bank runs, they drop-offs on their run.
You're still, that's an operational question, I don't know, I gotta keep answering.
And Wawa doesn't normally hire any type of security officer?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any other questions? And I'll open this up to the public for this witness, and you keep your comments, okay? And we're just addressing questions right now, so is there anybody in the audience? Mr. Sheldon?
Michael Sheldon, 47th Village Street. Just two quick questions regarding the emergency generator situation. In the event of power loss, will the gas pumps also be dependent upon bringing a generator into the facility? Or are the gas pumps on a separate emergency generator?
That's a very good question. I actually could not tell you emphatically that that is the case. However, I'm under the impression that it should power the entire building, including the gas.
I vaguely remember in the wake of Hurricane Sandy, that the state put into new laws requiring that gas pumps needed to have a, a separate standalone generator. I was just concerned if we ever, and God forbid, get hit with another Sandy, which was only six years ago.
Right.
If, if those pumps require the delivery of a temporary generator, a lot of people will be looking for generators at that point, and we may not be able to get anything here. And we had, Sandy hit us back in 2012. Many of the gas stations in this area were without power for well over a week. So I'm just concerned that the, I, it would be one thing to have a generator hookup for the store, but those gas pumps are even more critical to make sure that there's fuel available to local residents. So I would appreciate if there was some discussion or about having those gas pumps always powered in the event of power loss from PSC and G.
That makes perfect sense. I know that Wawa prided themselves during Hurricane Sandy in terms of being no place where residents could go when a lot of other places were shut down. I can tell you that if it's legislated, that that is a requirement, that it would absolutely be taken care of. Again, I'm assuming, I would have to look at the electrical drawings for this particular project to be able to tell you 100% that this is the case. So right now, I can tell you that it powers this building, and cannot emphatically tell you that it would not.
Obviously, I think just the board can look into, it would be really important for the sake of the community in years to come, to make sure that at least those gas pumps are operational if we should lose power.
Counsel, do you know of that answer?
We have, during the traffic testimony, they can provide that answer. I can tell you that I won't-
Well, you could, you could put a representative-
I could tell you that the, the gas pumps would be powered by the generator.
Any other questions? We'll close this portion down, and your next witness?
If I may, I'd like to call my traffic engineer, please.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your first one, last name?
Justin Taylor, T.A.Y.L.O.R.
Mr. Taylor, if you could, please give the board the benefit of your educational background, licenses that you hold, and have you would testify before this and other boards with regard to traffic?
Absolutely. I have a bachelor's in engineering from the University of Delaware, a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as a professional traffic operations engineer certified by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I'm practicing traffic planning for approximately the last 18 years, and I've testified to dozens of boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including this board with the last application.
So we'll accept your petition?
Thank you much.
If you could, please, Mr. Taylor, give the board the benefit of the location of this property and how this development will impact the traffic in this area.
Sure. I will refer back to, I believe it is A2 that Mr. Stafford is in. But as I'm doing that, there were several questions that came up right at the end of the last testimony. Wawa does fully intend to power the fuel pumps with their generator. That'll be, that, that's one of their desires. Also, when it comes down to video, they keep their video for approximately one week, so it will be available to the police department if you get there the next day. They also do weekly bank runs. So I hope that addresses the concerns in the operation. But let's bring, I guess we need A2 back up. By now, the board's familiar with the location, they're familiar with the project, we're familiar with the access. So I won't belabor those points other than saying, as Mr. Stafford has represented, that the driveways are in the approximate locations that were approved as part of the previous application. With the, the one change in that we are now, given the traffic associated with Wawa, signalizing that driveway. There are major improvements that are involved with the signalization of that driveway, and I'd like to mark A6.
A6.
A6 is entitled roadway improvements exhibit dated 5/14/2018. And what I really wanted to put this up here was to exemplify kind of what we needed to do, what kind of roadway improvements were necessary as part of this phase. I know the board has been concerned with the traffic in the area and the surrounding roadway, and we did take a hard look at that. And based on this phase of the project, what we're looking at is the signalization of the, of the access point at the southern end of the property, the widening of that access point to accommodate left and right turning vehicles exiting the site, as well as major roadway reconstruction for about 375 feet along Franklin Avenue. Now, you're familiar with the vertical curves that run through there. As we come up, you come up from Mill Street and then it drops back down on your way to Kyra Moss. In order to improve the sightlines and the safety of vehicles traveling along that roadway, what we're doing is actually cutting down that roadway about a foot to flatten that curve out, so that as vehicles are coming down to where the driveway will be and where the signal will be, they're fully visible from the vehicles traveling southbound along Franklin, but also for the vehicles traveling northbound to enter the site, they're visible, and you can see the traffic traveling southbound along Franklin and make that turn safely. and you can see the traffic traveling southbound along Franklin and make that turn safely. So as part of this, we will be reconstructing that entire section of the roadway to the county standards. Now, we've had preliminary discussions with the county, we're in the process of finalizing our county submission for these improvements, but based on the, the previous meetings that we've had, the county is in agreement with what we're doing here in the signalization of that. We will continue to copy the board, the board's professionals, as part of that continued application. So we have these improvements. I know there was concern at the last meeting about the traffic counts that we had. We have the ability to go back out and do traffic counts and update them to 2018 as part of this study. Unfortunately, the bridge along Mill Street is being detoured through there. So while we have volumes on Mill Street, we have current volumes along Franklin, what we found was the volume didn't change too, too much along Mill, and that's a function of the residents that are along Mill that are coming that way in the detour. And so we feel that the volumes are representative of what's out there, but there may be some variation to it. And I've had the opportunity to discuss with your traffic engineer, the board's traffic engineer, how, how do we rectify that? The, the bridge is closed for the next foreseeable future six to eight months. And while this project, wait, we really didn't think that it should be delayed based on that. So what we've come up with, as long as it's approval by the board, is that we would take a look and do an after-study. Once the Wawa's in there, we'll come back, we'll take a look, and we'll re-time what's going on there, if the volumes are different than what we project along Franklin. But given, given the volumes that we have, we've analyzed that intersection. I would say another piece to the corridor, figure out what we could do to fix the corridor, is we're looking to actually coordinate the signals at Claire Moss, at our driveway, and at Franklin. We're going to increase the, the signal timing at Claire Moss, so they're all running on a single timing plan of 110 seconds. And what that allows you to do, once they're coordinated, is to progress the traffic both northbound and southbound through that entire corridor, instead of getting stuck at one or two of the signals, for the most part, as the vehicles are traveling along Franklin Avenue, they'll continue to get those green lights once you've stopped at one. And so we felt that that is going to help the operation at Franklin and Mill, above and beyond what our, our impact to the site would be. What needs to be remembered in this is while Wawa generates traffic, we understand Wawa generates traffic, over 75% of the traffic associated with Wawa is already on the surrounding roadway network. It's already traveling on Franklin, and this just gives them the ability, a place to stop convenient on their commute to and from work. So when we look at what the, a new Wawa would generate that's new to the area, you're only talking about 50 to 60 cars during an hour, or a car every minute, that's associated with that Wawa, that's not currently, currently on the roadway. So when we look at the impact of that on that surrounding roadway network, while we needed to increase and signalize our driveway because of the vehicles coming in and out, when you get up to Mill, you're really, like I said, you're only talking about 30 or 40 cars that are going through that intersection that are new. And so the impact of that intersection is relatively nominal. And so that coupled with the proposed signal timing modifications and the coordination, we really feel that we've addressed the impact of this, this phase of the project with those I would also like to just reinforce, based on sort of testimony of Mr. Saffin's, I work on dozens of Wawas. We've had a chance to go out and take a look at what their parking demand actually is, and that 45 to 55 is the sweet spot of what they feel and what is really necessary, so that not every spot is full, but it's also not overparked. So while your ordinance is a little bit lower than that, we found that Wawa, you need that 50 spaces so that it actually functions safely. This is also the reason they use slightly oversized parking spaces. They use 10 by 20s on all of their sites, just for the ease of their customers to be able to get in and out. They use slightly oversized aisles, 30 feet, 30-foot aisles, to, again, give a nice, easy feel, safe feeling for the drivers and the customers to and from the site. I will hit briefly upon the signage. Mr. Saffin said a great job representing it. All I will say is the Wawa's of use, that you really need to be able to identify the gas price. As opposed to when you're driving down the road and you're looking at a sign, you know where you're going, most people choose their gas by, by the price. You know, there is some brand loyalty, but I know when I drive, I look, and oh, you know what, that's four cents cheaper? Maybe I'll go there. So we need to be able to raise it up and make the, the numbers visible enough and clear enough, so that people can identify that, make the lane changes necessary to get them lined up for the, for the driveway, and then enter the site. So I think the variances that are being sought, they have no detriment, and they would benefit the motor and public to get in the site and improve the safety of that driveway. So as for direct testimony, that's pretty much what I have. We can start to talk a little bit about your board engineer's review letter, if we'd like to go through that. We really, we have, we have no objections to what's in here. He's asked for some additional testimony that I believe we have, I've addressed some of it, but if we want to go item by item, we can kind of do that, just to make sure that I've hit everything.
Why don't we do that?
So number one, we talked about the counts, additional counts that we did. We did do the typical morning and evening peak commuting hours, 7:00 and 9:00, and 4:30 to 6:00, to kind of encompass those peak hours. We've talked about, number two asks about what type of mitigation measures, and again, with the coordination of the signals and the increase in the signal timing, background cycle lengths, we feel that we've mitigated the impact at the, at the adjacent sections and actually helped the traffic flow up and down Franklin Avenue, as well as at the, at the side streets. So number three, we, we agree to. Number four, we're coordinating the signals, so that, again, feeds off of those mitigation measures. Number five is a comment. Number six, Mr. Saffin's hit on it pretty well, but from a pedestrian access standpoint, just to build slightly on it, once this signal is built, it will also be fully compliant with current MUTCD and ADA requirements at the intersection, including push buttons and pedestrian countdown timers. One of the requirements that the county asked for was actually a handicap ramp on the crosswalk crossing Franklin Avenue, in case they come back through the park and actually want to connect the park via sidewalk network. There won't be anything there currently, other than the handicap ramp and, and the landing, but it was their thought that there's a possibility they may come through and do some sort of streetscape or some sort of pedestrian walkway through there. And so they require us not only to cross our driveway, but to cross Franklin Mill, and that ties back into the sidewalk network that's proposed throughout the, throughout the development, which actually doesn't show. So we come to A3. On this site, you can see the sidewalk is located along the southern side of the main access aisle, but also will connect in via sidewalk to the, the front of the building, and the sidewalk that actually runs along the, the approved pharmacy in this site. So we feel that we've really taken care of the pedestrians, we've got them on the site safely, we provided the crosswalks necessary, and, and made the site ADA accessible. Number seven, yes, we've built, we have a problem with number seven. So then we go to set-up circulation. Number one is a comment. Number two talks about the, the axle decelerations along Mill and along Franklin. And I know the board, there was concern in the last one, that's why we dedicated the right-of-way. What we're looking at now is five or six cars that are using that right turn. We understand that as the development continues, there will be need for that, and we will most likely use that right-of-way for improvements at, at that intersection. But given the volume of traffic and the new traffic that's actually being generated through the intersection at this point, at the Wawa, it really doesn't, the, the analysis doesn't bear out the necessity for it at this point. So it's our feeling that, it's a good thing that we continue to maintain that. All the improvements that are proposed as part of this phase, take that into account, don't jeopardize the ability to use that, that right-of-way to widen the lanes, but that really, that the, the turn lanes aren't necessary as, as part of this project of Number three, we have no problem with. Number four talks about the sightlines on the driveway along Mill. It is something we testified to at the last hearing, however, just to reiterate, sightlines will be provided that meet Ashdod site, site, stopping site, stopping site distances, excuse me. And the way we're doing that is we're actually removing the existing abutments out there. They're doing the remediation, but it will, the old railroad abutment will be taken down to provide that clear sightline down Mill Street in both directions. So once the, once the occasion gets a little further, once the remediation is done and that abutment is taken down, you will be able to pull out of Mill Street and see in both directions to, to safely exit the site. Number five, I believe we talked about the pedestrian access. Number six, we agree with. Number seven, number seven, we utilized a 47-foot ladder truck, which is a default vehicle that we use. It, we can reach out, and we have a problem reaching out to the borough's fire department. What we find is that 47 feet is pretty much the largest truck they're going to run across. It represents one of the ladder trucks, but not articulated, and so that's why we circulate, we use that to circulate it through the site, just to make sure that the emergency vehicles can, can navigate the site safely. Deliveries was already testified to, and then nine through 11, nine through, nine through 12, we, we agreed to. It's all, as this project moves forward into the different phases, we'll continue to, I continue to be back in front of you guys. I'll continue to be doing traffic counts, update them to make sure they're current, and there will be traffic studies with every phase of this project to kind of figure out what is the right time to, to construct these improvements and whether necessary, and whether they all come at once, whether they come in pieces during the separate phases. We'll return, based on that study and based on review by your professionals, as, as the continued phases come along.
And there were three general comments?
Yeah, we, we have no issue with that, Ian.
And just for purposes of the record, we're referencing the May 9, 2018 letter prepared by brake view engineers.
That's correct.
I have nothing further from Mr. Taylor.
Any questions? Yes.
Questions? So I understand you say that you're going to lower the, the horizontal slope by about a foot on the whole roadway.
So referring-
The width of the roadway?
Yes, yes.
You're going to change the topography of the-
Correct. All four lanes of Franklin Avenue will be lowered by that approximately that foot.
And you're going to put a signal at that driveway?
That's correct.
That main driveway. Why at that time wouldn't you do the roadway? Why would you do all that construction to come back a year down the road, take down the signals, widen the road, and rework something that you're, I just don't understand that thinking, because with future development, you're going to want those deceleration lanes. Why wouldn't you just build it into the phase, this phase right now? Why would you do all that work and then come back and tear it out a couple of years down the road?
So realistically, what we're looking at is what improvements are going to mitigate the issue at Franklin Mill? What are going to be the most effective improvements? Now, that right-of-way, we may need to utilize for northbound, southbound, left turn lanes. We may need to widen, and Mill may end up being with an exclusive right turn lane, or maybe there'd be an exclusive left turn lane with a through right. And all that needs to be determined with the future phases, when we get into the volume and as the, the traffic grows through the area, to really be able to analyze. So just as you say, why put it in the rip it out? That's kind of where we're at. If that, if that lane ends up being, we end up with northbound, southbound, left turn lanes at the intersection, then we may only be taking a portion of that widening and a portion of the widening on the other side where the park is, to be able to accommodate that. Same, same thing with the widening on Franklin and on, on, excuse me, on Mill on both sides. We really don't know what the necessary improvements are going to be to accommodate this future traffic. What we do know is at this point, it isn't necessary, that the, that the signal timings and the coordination is mitigating the impact that we have.
And that's based on your old survey?
Hmm?
It's based on the old information?
No, that's based on the, the current traffic counts that we did.
You can get a copy. Well, from another practical standpoint, if you don't have this deceleration lane, cars are going to decelerate in one of the two lanes going, let's say, south to enter, which is going to bite into, to some degree, the time that the light remains green, same with cars come, well, cars coming out, they, they use the, the signal off. I just don't, I don't see the, the thinking that during the phase of, of construction, where you have heavy equipment on the road and utilities being laid, that you would not need that acceleration right now. It, it's arguable that you may even need it right of way. You may find, six months into operation, oh, we need this, we need this lane. It actually makes sense to go back and tear everything up and redo it at that point, because I don't see the practicality in that. I just don't. I know you're a big developer, so I'm in that, and I'm in the construction business, and I don't see why you wouldn't want to build that phase in, especially if the county's agreeable. If, if they want to give up some of the park, maybe we'll take another lane on that side too, that would really help the flow of traffic. Only taking five feet of the right-of-way doesn't help you in any way, if you're going to take five feet from the other side and readjust the whole roadway. I just don't see the thinking, especially when you're changing the topography of that roadway. That's to me, a, a major undertaking. Why wouldn't you put the curbs where they belong from, from that, from that time? Why would you say, well, down the road, here, down the road, we're going to rip out the traffic lights, because they're going to be in the wrong spot at that point, correct?
No, no, no.
Or potentially-
Mill. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 we're talking Franklin.
All the signal improvements, all the improvements that are there, take into account that right-of-way dedication. They're outside that area.
They're outside the envelope.
Right? So that they don't have to come back out. And I mean, I can tell you realistically, as this project progresses, and what they're considering with the medical office and, you know, being tossed around, there's going to be major improvements at that intersection, right? That drive, because that's going to be bringing people here that aren't normally here. Now you're bringing employees in and whatnot. What we're trying to do is keep the, the palette as open as possible to accommodate that, so we get the best bang for everyone's buck at that intersection. And I can't, I just can't really tell you what that's going to be without diving into what those, those additional phases-
Do you have some idea what the future's going to hold?
We, we, we have thoughts on where it's going, but there, there really isn't anything set in stone or, or firmed up. And honestly, like I said, we like to keep that open palette, to be able to accommodate that, because there, there are constraints. You have the parkland, you have the culvert and the creek there. So improvements to that intersection are going to be challenging, and we need to be able to use every aspect that we have, every facet of that.
Is part of that, is part of that retention basin going to be, Mr. Walsh had asked that question, it's not going to be affected by-
No, not at all.
Right.
As part of the approval of the last time, we pushed everything back, we pushed the retaining walls back, we moved everything back to be able to accommodate that, that future widening.
I just think that it would make sense to do it, but you guys know better. At some point, you're going to come back before the board and look to do another part of this development, and I don't see it going forward unless there's added lanes.
So, um, in speaking, let me just, I guess, take a, take a step back and ask you where you really look. You're looking at a deceleration lane, a right turn lane into this-
That's part of it, right, correct.
From an acc- from an acceleration lane standpoint, you're not going to really need that. We're not going to be committing right turn on red out of the signal. So they will be provided a right turn arrow when the northbound advance is going, so you'll be able to come out, but we felt that it was better not to allow a right turn on red out of that facility to, to slow the traffic down. But I think what we could do is come in, maybe bump out a 50-foot right turn lane, something there, just to give you a little bit of storage to get into.
Why not bigger, though? I mean, why minimize it?
Because the further we go along here, the further it compromises what's accomplishable at that intersection in the future. So the further north we would go, I mean, I could take a look, I don't, I don't have the analysis to show me. I can guarantee you that a 50-foot left turn lane there, or right turn lane, would be sufficient to handle the storage. Because again, that could, that allows them to come in and-
It's too crowded.
Yeah. I mean, like, you're, you're going to make that turn about 50 miles an hour.
Yeah, just understand that, I want to understand your thinking. Why minimize it? And why not go further north with that lane? What would, what's the benefit?
I just don't think you're accomplishing much by going any further with that lane. And like I said, we're dealing with, at the corner, we're dealing with limited real estate that's, that's feasibly usable for any improvement at this intersection. Like I said, the constraint of the culvert here and the creek, as well as the parklands and the grading through there, makes it challenging, and it would be, it would be more feasible to maintain the way it is now with that reserved roadway in case it's need for that improvement at the intersection. That's kind of where I'm at. I understand your concern about getting people off the road, coming in, and I think, you know, coming in here and providing 50, 100 feet. I mean, we can sit down with your engineer and work out what he feels is acceptable too, but to give them just a little bit of area of refuge, I, I think that's accomplishable.
Yeah, yeah, that would be minimal, but I, I mean, listen, if, if, if it makes more sense to come back a year or two down the road, widen the road, and, and what with the county- and widen the road and work with the county, and then you have Mill Street too, that plays into the whole thing. I understand it's a bigger issue, but something that would at least allow cars to decelerate to make that right turn, I think would be helpful, just to flow of traffic.
Okay. I mean, I think it's something that we can sit down with your professionals and come up with a solution that's acceptable.
Yes, you did mention the variances, I can go in, particularly for the Monument side.
Correct.
I know we heard testimony about the size and the purpose, but we never had testimony of where it's going to be located, the setbacks from the sidewalk and the setbacks from the driveway, especially now since we're raising the possibility of another 50-foot, you know, deceleration lane.
So, the Wawa sign with the price points is located here at the central driveway, visible in the southbound and the northbound direction. It's set back 25 feet from the right away, from the future right away. So, there's no interaction with the sidewalk, and it gives great visibility. The reason we wanted to put it that much further back is because of the horizontal curve as you go down towards Bar Mosh. We wanted to give it as much visibility as you traveled northbound to be able to see the price points. So the location there was optimal for us, we believe, also given the vertical challenges that we're dealing with along Franklin Avenue.
So having it there, if I'm coming north along Franklin, I'm basically passing the new traffic light, and I'd have to make a left at the next driveway.
Well, the sign, as well as the canopy and the building maintenance side, will be visible as you drive up Bar Mosh.
Yeah, but not the price.
But not the price point. The price point is visible as you come around the curtain, as you start coming up the road, in enough time, in my opinion, to recognize what the price is and be able to enter it, be able to see it.
Okay. As far as I recollect, there was no previous testimony about the location.
Mrs. Short? I support Mr. Conchi's suggestion, only because when I look at this, and I see this as a positive and not a negative, Wawa will be the largest service provider of fuel, not in a negative way, positive way, besides the other services of the store, for Belleville, Nutley, a vast majority of that area of Bloomfield. Therefore, even the idea in an emergency of a generator being delivered, I need to stress that because eventually, it won't take long before people realize that Wawa is The business is, the business is going to definitely be there, and we need a generator that's not going to be portably delivered in an emergency. It would be advisable with the generator for your gasoline supply. B.
I can tell you, Wawa's corporate model is to have an on-call contract with these generator companies. So it's not so much that they get a call and this, the power here is going out, and then they have to reserve a generator. They have generators reserved for these sites when necessary. They don't have to go to the yard and have a guy be, oh, I sold out, we got to go to the next guy. They have this contract because they found it was more efficient for them. Instead of dedicating some piece of property on the site, year-round, you know, decade round, when you don't need it, they have the ability to just have a drop-off and a quick connect, get it up and running, and they found that that just was more efficient for them. But it's not, there's the guarantee that generator there when it's needed.
The quick checks do that too, with their get, when they have a storm.
You know, they're there once an hour every day and have to maintain, maintenance and rewire it with the newest model available.
Okay. Any other concerns? I have a concern. You spoke quite a bit about Franklin Avenue and what you're possibly doing, what we've... However, last time, we spoke of Mill Street. You haven't addressed any of those concerns, because, you know, let's face it, the county's forcing you to do Franklin Avenue. What are you going to do for Mill Street?
I-
I mean, it's definitely, your traffic study was flawed. I didn't get a second one, so I don't know about anybody else, I don't think they did either. So you're talking of a new count. It's horrendous on Mill Street. Horrendous. And you're not addressing that.
Understood. I think what the study, I apologize if it wasn't submitted, I thought it was part of the application of our updated traffic study. What we look at is the amount of traffic that this phase of the development is actually generating to the Mill approach. And what we find is five or six cars during that hour, because we're drawing-
But you're talking Franklin Avenue. I'm talking Mill Street. Mill Street is congested right now, before your facility even gets there, or even the storage, or even the pharmacy. It's horrendous. You had stopped your count at 8:30 in the morning. I can go there, which I normally travel that route, from between 9:15, and I'm backed up. I'm backed up all the way up the street. Come home at night, and you're right in the park, and you're backed up almost until Mount Prospect Avenue and Union. I mean, something needs to be done on Mill Street, and you haven't addressed that. I know Franklin, the county's forcing you to do this upgrade.
Well, that's not 100% true, I mean, but as part of the signal, we are near-
It appears that the county is getting you to do something for that street and that area, which our concerns were. And that's agreed, but you're not addressing anything on Mill Street.
I think that the coordination of the signals is going to help Mill slightly. It's not going to alleviate the problem. There's a lot of traffic on Mill, and we understand it backs up through the park and it backs up coming southeastbound down the hill. What we looked at under this phase is the amount of traffic that we're adding to those approaches. And what we're talking about is a car every 10 to 15 minutes.
That's overwhelming. It's overwhelming for an area that's already congested.
I mean, I-
You add one, and then all you have to do is close the street on the other side, and you're not getting out of that area. And now with the bridge closed up near Bloomfield, forget it. There's nowhere to go. You can't get out.
I mean, I think as part of the additional phases to this project, there will be improvements to this intersection. I think just based on the analysis that we've done during this, of this phase, that the impact to those approaches is nominal.
But that's what you said last time, oh, we'll come back when we have the third property done. You're going to come back again. There's something, has to be a remedy in-
I understood, and I think we are fully committed to doing improvements to this intersection.
But not now.
When they're warranted. Yes, I mean, realistically, when they're warranted. You know, we need to take a look at what the no-bill conditions are, what the bill conditions are, and what the impact of the site generated traffic is. And during this phase of the project, the-
But that survey was flawed. It was flawed.
So we picked up all the volumes that we could. And we've agreed as part of this to come back and do another study. I mean, we'll be able to do traffic counts when the bridge is open again, to be able to pick up what's along Mill. We had correlated the volumes that we had along Mill that we counted in March to the volumes that we had from 2016, to come up with a representative flow of it. And all the traffic along Franklin Avenue and the far side of Mill is what's currently out there. It's current data. We did what we could to make an educated assumption on the volumes for Mill Street, and then we based our analyses on that. But when we go back, we take a really hard look at the traffic associated with Wawa, we're talking about five to 10 cars on that Mill Street approach.
And then how many for the storage? How many for the pharmacy?
Um, I-
Exactly.
On the Mill Street approach coming eastbound to Franklin Avenue, we have 18 total cars during these phases. 18. Because the convenient way to access the site is via-
Was that your first survey or the second one?
Huh?
Was that your first survey, your signing, or the second one?
This is the second traffic study that was submitted and prepared by our office dated March 13th for the Wawa.
I don't have that to prove, so I'm not sure. All I know is the first was flawed. Severely flawed, the first count.
Let me see if I can help.
I hope we can get some help here, and I guess, are we done?
I have no further questions. You were asking questions.
All right. Yeah, we'll wait, and we'll finish with him first.
The board does have any?
I just, I was under the impression that the rest of the railroad structure, the wall structure, was, that was supposed to be taken down.
That's correct. We'd be eliminating that in order to improve the sightlines on Mill Street, as well as to construct the self-storage.
Once that wall is down, it's easy to adjust that curve.
Um, yes, I mean, like, the realignment would be facilitated by the removal of the wall.
Because the wall right now is, that's what seemed to control that curve, that curve historically.
But I don't, I don't know if there's any necessity to reduce the curve or increase the curve along that section.
You said if you get rid of, if we get rid of that railroad, I'm sure not using the right term, whatever, the wall, the trestle. So it would improve the sightline. And yes, I agree, it would improve the sightline, but if the, if the curve, because that curve had to have been there because of that railroad structure, which has been there forever. So if you take that, if that is going to be taken down, it doesn't seem to, seem to be that complicated that that curve, you write, you know where it is, right there?
We're talking through here, yes, correct.
If that's down, then that will, because that sightline is even more improved if that, if that curve is softened. Right?
Unfortunately, I think what you might accomplish there unnecessarily, without meaning to, is then you're going to encourage people along that roadway to actually increase the speeds that are traveling along Mill Street. What this does is actually provide a little bit of traffic calming to keep the speeds down where you want, where you want in that area.
Okay. Because when, now that the bridge, now that the bridge in Bloomfield is closed, normally
what's happening is once there, as, as people are coming from the Bloomfield side down that road towards Mill Street, if there is any clearance, that, the backup seems to occur back towards that curve.
The slowdown through here begins, because you can't see around the bridge alignment. And I think once you clear those sightlines, you'll have a better vision of where the queues from the Franklin Avenue intersection actually are.
All right. I think you've got my question. Any other questions? All right, open up to the public, the answers.
Judy Moore just had one comment. I've lived on Montgomery Place for 32-
We need questions now.
For 32 years, just a comment about the traffic study. If you did, it's been silent on Mill Street since the bridge closed. Prior to that, it's like the Indianapolis 500, because everybody takes that road from Belleville, Bloomfield into Newark. And so there's always traffic there. So, when you, you know, I mean, six months from the bridge doing reopen, I find it hard to believe that you're only anticipating an addition of five or six cars making that turn.
Okay, thank you.
What we're talking about, that five or six vehicles, is the new traffic that's to be generated by the self-storage and pharmacy that were previously approved, but also the Wawa. Because we anticipate drawing most of our traffic for these developments from the Franklin Avenue corridor. I'm not saying there aren't going to be people that are going to come from Mill, but it's a very, very small percentage of the overall traffic, because most of it is coming from that Franklin Avenue.
And is there a plan to put a traffic light in where the entrance is on Mill Street for the storage area?
No, no, there's not.
Any other questions, Mr. Franklin?
Yes, sir, you said the March 13th survey, what year?
The R traffic study is dated March 13th, 2018.
2018?
Yes.
Well, the bridge is closed, there's no traffic there. So how good is that study?
So the volumes along Mill actually are comparable to the volumes on Mill that we had from the 2016 study.
With the bridge closed?
That's correct.
I don't understand. The bridge closed, there's no traffic allowed to go through there. So how can you do a study?
So we counted 600 to 700 cars during the peak hour traveling along Mill with the bridge closed.
Okay, so with the bridge open, we're going to do more traffic.
Understood. Yes, you are. But that's not really what we were looking at here. What we're looking here is the relative impact of the site-generated traffic of the project. And that six to eight cars, that car every 10 to 15 minutes, is going to have a nominal impact on the operation of Mill. I'm not trying to tell you that that Mill operates great. It's heavy, there's heavy volume through there, but the impact of this phase of the project doesn't exacerbate that issue at all.
Well, I think one or two of our board members stated, forget the new development there. We already have a massive problem there. And personally, let me tell you something, I'm 50 years, I'm not Prospect Avenue, I go up there. In 2000, my son got married, he lives on Rose Street, right off Montgomery. My other son got married 11 years ago, he lives on, off of Glenwood Avenue. To get to Rose Street, if my son called, we'd be there in two minutes. My son off Glenwood, we'd be there in four or five minutes. It's now 20 minutes to get to Rose Street. And a half hour, in fact, Friday, I had to go pick up my grandson and take him to school Friday morning, right? Traffic was so bad, right? From Franklin to Willard, six minutes. Now, we already got a problem. And another board member, Mr. Conchi, says, again, I'm a contractor too. I don't understand, you're doing all this construction work, you're going to dig up Franklin Avenue, you got to put in new curbs. Why not put the new curbs where they belong in anticipation of increased traffic? And if it doesn't, at least we do have a nice wide roadway. It doesn't make any kind of construction sense. The other thing, when you talk about the sightline, you know, not taking that sharp curve out of Mill Street, you take down the button, true, you're going to have a better sightline. The problem is you've got that little curve. You're a healthy young man. You know, as we get older, it's a little harder to turn your neck this way. 90, you know, if it was a T intersection-
Mr. DeBiazzi, can we object? Can we limit this to questions?
Yeah.
Questions now.
Yeah, well, that's the point. I'm asking it. Do you take into consideration that older people have a hard time? That's not a T intersection. With that curve there, it's not a T intersection. So you have to turn more to observe that traffic around the bend.
So we took into account what the ASG, the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials, would say for the sightlines through there. And it actually is at about 90 degrees. Your sightline, your clear sightline that you would need to see for the vehicles traveling northbound lands right about at the point of this curve here. Now, we're doing better than that. We're clearing this out, so that as you travel along Mill Street, you'll get a clearer view. But the actual driveway and the sightlines from the proposed Mill driveway don't actually go around that curve as you come out of there.
From the front of the storage facility to the Mill Street curve? Now, the, where's the front?
The front-
The building, the storage facility parallel to Mill Street, that side.
The side.
Right. From there to the Mill Street curve is how far?
From here to the Mill Street curve?
Yeah.
At its closest point, 180 feet.
Okay. What's going to be in that area?
It's the detention basin for the site.
Okay. It looks green. So you're not going to see any buildings on there?
No, no, no. This is, this handles all the drainage, or the upper level of the building, so it'll always be green.
Is that an open retention basin or underground?
Open.
It's an open.
It's above ground.
So if you've got over 100 feet, you know, at the narrowest point you said 100, what's the problem with taking 112 feet from Mill Street?
Mr. DeBiazzi, I have to raise an objection. We've allowed a wide latitude. It seems like we're almost relitigating the last application here. This is a permitted use. I'm not sure I understand that the questioning is germane with regard to this particular application, not as that we limit it to this application.
Well, this is, because at the last application, I and others asked the same question. We also questioned the survey, which was flawed because it- because the statistics say, I don't know what organization, said the traffic was going to improve at only 2%. But then when I questioned, it was 2% for the entire county, not specifically Belleville and Bloomfield. Now, one of the reasons I can't get to my son's house is because all the development in Bloomfield has generated all this traffic that comes through, there's no way to get through Belleville, except Belleville Avenue and Drummond.
Is that a question, sir?
Yes. I'll answer, these are the, these are the facts that exist now. And I'm asking, why then would you do a simple thing like 10 feet of grass to widen Mill Street and do like Mr. Conti said, do all that construction? You're ripping everything up anyway. You rip up, you know... I'm not going to put sidewalks or lay shots. And next year, I'm going to have a baby, I'll come back and I'll make it a little wider for your baby.
Mr. Frantin Tony, please call, no comments.
Well, I, I hope this board follows through. I hope you mandate that this is going to be good. While, and my final question...
Are there any other questions? Mr. Sheldon?
Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. I have just a couple of quick questions, which are actually continuations of questions raised by three board members. Firstly, Arlene's question about the generator situation. I understand your explanation that Wawa keeps generators and warehouses or whatever, when, when the need arises, they get transported. And I understand that well, in theory, provided there are only isolated or a very few number of Wawas than generators. But as I raised earlier, what happens in the event where you have a catastrophic storm like Sandy, where suddenly you have hundreds of stores now without generators? What do you do in that scenario? You have generators available for, for stores that, you have all your stores in New Jersey, New York, Connecticut. Suddenly you now have most of your, your stores in the mid-Atlantic or northeast area without power. You have generate sufficient number of generators to, to power up all your stores? Or is again, it's going to be a situation where, like double experience back in 2012, most of our gas stations were without power for a week or longer? So I, I ask, what, I understand your, your explanation, you have generators available and they will be delivered to store, to your stores on a case-by-case basis. But in the scenario where you now all of your stores and a large part of the country are suddenly without power, what do you do then?
It's my understanding that Wawa does have that, that sufficiency to be able to draw on a reserve of generators to handle the catastrophic events such as that. Now, you're never going to have every store that Wawa has out of power. But they have, they have a business model set up that in order to be able to handle that, it's part of their, their desire to be good neighbors within the communities they're going to. They want to be, they want to be the one that's open when nobody else is, to be able to handle that. And so it's my understanding that, yes, something catastrophic like that, they would be able to power all the stores that they have.
What a permanent generator really take up that much space? I see generators at lots of other stores, they don't seem to have that large a footprint. Usually, you know, six by eight concrete pad is enough. And then there's no worry, you don't have to worry about transporting a generator to, to a site.
I honestly, I can't speak to the size of the generator that would be necessary for building this size. Plus, plus the gasoline, plus everything that goes along.
I'm just talking about the gas pumps. The generator, I can, I could live with the generator being brought in to keep the perishables in the store valid. But I'm talking about the gas pumps themselves. If, if, if there's something to be done to ensure that in the event of a widespread catastrophic storm, that those gas pumps, as, as board members said, in very short order, people are going to become very reliant on your, your gas station. If, if that is taken offline for any period of time, it's going to have a big impact on our community as we experienced back in 2012.
All I can say is I think that Wawa has taken every effort to ensure that that doesn't happen. That they have these contracts in place to be able to deliver this at short notice and do accommodate multiple storage throughout the state. So I think, I think they've done everything that they can to this point without fully constructing on it, which they've decided as a corporation that they, they will not do. They want, they want to have this flexibility so that they don't have to deal with the maintenance of the generator. That they can hire this company to be able to, to drop the stuff off. So, like I said, I think they've done everything... And now, that's a great point, actually, that I, that I hadn't really brought up in the fact that they do, they also have department to, to track these storms, to be able to prep. And if they need to be bringing in generators from Ohio or Pennsylvania or something like that in the state, in the case of an emergency, they, they have the ability to draw on that reserve.
All right, well, that's somewhat reassuring. I thank you, thank you for that, that piece of information. I, I also share the comments made by Mr. Conti and Patty about why the Franklin Avenue area isn't being widened at this particular point in time. You have the focus of the county on this development. And it's just not Franklin Avenue. You may remember in previous testimony, I said that if you're going to start expanding Mill Street, as I think you agreed to do, you, I think if we go back to the previous testimony, there was a concession that Mill Street would, you would concede 10 feet of space to widen Mill Street. But I also advocated that while you've got the county's focus on this, there's another little piece of Mill Street, which is really the crux of why there's such a traffic pipe here. And that's that little section of Mill Street that leads out of the park by Naninas. That's only a two-lane, it's, it's one-way in each direction. And what happens there, I'm sure you've probably noticed this...
We need questions now, you know that.
But, but, well, I would like, all right. You, you've said earlier that this is an ongoing dynamic project, that as it evolves, you'll be doing other phases. And if roads need to be widened, that will, that will happen. My question to the planning board is, what leverage do you have over the developer? All of this gets built. And we also have that huge...
I'm, I'm going to respond to you on that. Because I'm going to recommend to the board that we maintain jurisdiction over this application. And that we watch the application. And every six months, call the applicant back to go over these issues in conjunction with the county.
So at some point, if the planning board deems that the, the traffic here has gotten much worse than anyone envisioned, you can compel, you can, for their cost, to, to facilitate road expansion.
Well, certainly it's not going to be at Belleville's cost.
Well, I want to make sure that it's not at our cost, but then you have...
We'll have that discussion as this goes further along.
I just don't want us to be in peril and then to have to, Belleville have to incur...
We need questions now, just for the record. You can give us comments later.
Thank you, David.
Before we do your next witness, we need a break for our stenographer.
Yes, we'll take a five-minute recess. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Oliver, you can bring up your next witness.
We have no additional witnesses. I understand Mr. Jahr may be giving some testimony.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your first and last name?
John Jahr, J-A-H-R.
So simple, it's hard to...
Good evening, board. Briefly, credentials. I'm a transportation professional, I've been for 30 years. I've testified before this board and the zoning board here in Belleville. Well, that was difficult.
And you have a license.
And all my, like, the old my credentials are current and in good standing. Okay, so I understand, you know, we've heard some testimony from the applicant's traffic engineer and site engineer. And, you know, we need to bring all this together to make some sense of it all. There are a number of things that they're going to do as part of the development of this site to this point that are going to be beneficial to Mill Street and to Franklin, okay? They are not going to solve the problems in Mill Street as part of this stage of the development. But I think an important feature of what we're here to talk about tonight maybe hasn't been stressed enough. This Wawa is the, only subject of the application this evening, okay? The other parts of the site or the future development site is not the subject of why we're here. I think it's very important for the board to understand that Wawa, just in nature of the facility, is not a traffic generator. It's a traffic attractor for pass-by trips. Generally speaking, people do not get up in the morning and say, "I'm going to go to Wawa and then I'm going to go to work." They get up in the morning and say, "I have to go to work." So, "Oh, Wawa's on the way. I'm going to stop in here, I'm going to get my coffee, I'm going to fill my gas, I'm going to go to the next stop." Wawa is not what we call destination, okay? The self-storage facility, the CBS with the pharmacy, to varying degrees, they're destinations. And that ginormous green area, which is yet to be determined, probably going to end up being a destination, okay? And destination trips are very different than pass-by trips. Destination trips are adding traffic to the road. In other words, the problem that you're talking about on Mill Street, we do have some challenges though with this study. As you've already identified, there's some, some difficulties or flaws, we may say, with the traffic study. And that the bridge to Bloomfield has been out. So he's done his traffic study. And the counts that he's using are to the best visibility. But we really can't know for sure how, what, what we need. In other words, for me to help to guide the board and guide this applicant to get the right improvements so we're not throwing money out the window and redoing things six times, we need to get that bridge back open. Which, by the way, Bloomfield wants it open very badly as well, okay? Because there's also significant backups on the other side. We need that bridge to get open and we need them, we need to do a traffic count. When the, where the Wawa comes into this is not really going to have a big effect on what improvements he's going to have to do long-term anyway, okay? Short-term, take the abutments out, that's going to help Mill Street. It's going to help sightlines, driver's going to see things better. It'll be helpful. Not so sure I'm going to like the speed changes that might come with that. Because when people can see better, they get that lead foot going. So I'm a little concerned about that. That's going to be probably subject for discussion in the future as well, okay? Which, by the way, that's the downside of fixing the roads. The downside of fixing the road is, "Oh, my road stinks, there's potholes, it's terrible to drive one." And we go, we pave the road. And the next one, "Oh, everybody's speeding on the road, can you just put speed bumps? I need a four-way stop." Uh-huh. So we have to be mindful about the big picture. What I'd like to ask the board to consider in this application is that some of the things they are going to do and they're going to pay for with their money is, you know, coordinating the lights, that's going to help the traffic move better. Taking the abutment out, that's going to help the traffic move better. The work on Franklin is very, very expensive and very, very helpful. The issue with the vertical curve there is relatively unnoticed by the most drivers, but it causes some real difficulties with the traffic movement through there. That's a real big help to there. The challenge that, that Mr. Conti came to and the rest of the board was, let's, let's go one piece at a time. Let's talk about Franklin. With regard to Franklin, I'm not so sure if I want the right turn as much as I might not want to have a left turn. What I would ask the board is allow me the latitude to work with the developer, work with the constraints that are there. Because remember, the park is a constraint, all right? We're not going to be able to go past that right of way, all right? The only right of way we have is theirs, okay? What I'd like the board to consider is, instead of forcing them into a right-turn D cell today, allow them to work with Tom and myself to determine whether it's a right-turn D cell that we want or maybe a left turn. It might be, might be more beneficial to the community to have a left turn over Franklin to the site than having a D cell for the right turn.
You mean left going north?
I don't know the answer to that right now. Why don't I know the answer? Because...
And I have the determination.
Right, and it would be, so, what, what, the, the ranger was on target though. And what he said was, you know, "Well, I did this study, I did the best I could, well, I had." All right? And he's in a tough spot because his client's saying, "Hey, I want to get this in here and there's no reason why I can't. It's not my fault the bridge is out, why can't we build the road?" So I think we can put some protections in place for us. I think our attorney has nailed it right on the head, okay? I think we need just to have some protections. If the board intends to approve this application, we just need to make sure that we're covered, all right? I'd like you to consider, as a condition of approval, having the applicant work with us on the determination of whether we're going to have a left turn lane in or a right turn D cell.
Look, can I stop you for one second? If you're looking at that, the left turn lane would be south of the D cell lane. So it really wouldn't matter unless you're giving up more than 10-foot area where it hasn't developed yet.
You would... Here, here, let me walk you through, here's the problem. On this side of the road is what, what I'm going to call the no-touchy line. Because Essex County in their infinite wisdom has made this all what we call Greenacre Park. And that means, other than maybe putting a sidewalk, you can't touch it. So every bit of widening or any lane changes I need to make, I need to work out with these guys. Because it all needs to happen over here, okay? So if I'm going to change the configuration here and do some kind of widening or changing, it's going to push into here and then that's going to push this over and it's going to take that right turn away. Because now I'm pushing that left turn over this way, I'm pushing this curve into them, all right? And I'm realigning the road. Now, since they're going to be digging this whole road up here, I agree with you, I think that we should, once they do this, we need to do as much of this as possible. I think the signal needs to be designed in a manner such that in the future, if you, other widenings or changes need to take place, they need to be factored in. We just can't put it up and say, "Forget it." Needs to be, think, it needs to be thought about. So I think they, if they're, if you're going to say, move forward on this, they need to work with us to get that right, okay? They just can't go and just do whatever they want. I think any meetings they have with the county, Tom or I need to go through. Somebody from Belleville needs to attend these meetings. And here with Sanjeet and Osip, the other folks at the county are saying about this application, okay? We can't, can't, can't just, you know, listen, they're our county, we love them, we're dear to them, but this is our town. We want to make sure this road gets fixed right so we're happy. That's it for Franklin, let's talk about Mill, okay? For Mill, I think in the future, all right, when... All right, so this looks like about a third of the site and this looks to be about two-thirds. We know that this intersection really stinks. It's got some difficult levels of service. The traffic backs up here on a regular basis. The, the, the little road into, into Nonya's at the park. Because you can't widen that road, it's never going to get better. It's always drawing tons of green time from the light, all right? Making the rest of this thing, rest of this operation not work well. I think in the future, there might need to be some improvements there, okay? But if we're going to ask a developer to fund traffic improvements, we need to have a clear link of the traffic they're adding back to the very first statement I made. Wawa is not a traffic generator. Wawa is a traffic receiver, it's a traffic draw, okay? It wouldn't, it's not, it's not, I don't want to use the word fair. There has to be, there has to be a logical, a rational nexus to go from, "Hey, we need to fix this, this problem with our roads and it's your fault because you added the traffic," all right? The Wawa is not the right one to say, "It's your fault you added the traffic." Because the Wawa's a pass-by, all right? And, you know, studies show that these things can be as much as 90, 95% of the people are just going there because they're going someplace else. So to make the, make the Wawa the reason to force them to do traffic improvements, there's not, there's not, that rational nexus doesn't exist there, okay? They've been willing to work with us and make some of these improvements, which are great, all right? And we'll make the, the Wawa function and make this new signal function and give us some improvement and some help on Franklin. But honestly, with the abutment comes down on Mill and they coordinate the lights, there'll be a slight improvement. It still isn't going to be what we want. What I want to do is I want to wait until the bridge is open, I want to do a traffic count, I want to do a study, and then let's see when they come back in for the rest of this. When they come back in for the rest of the site, the rest of the site's probably going to be a traffic generator, all right? You've already made them dedicate property along the frontage so widening can't happen. We have to cross our fingers and hope that it's enough, all right? And that, you know, the basin's far enough back. You know, because that's, once a DEP, that's another whole government thing, right? The DEP approves that basin, and I'm constantly fighting this. You know, once they approve the basin, forget it. You know, if I ask them for one more foot of property, it's like with the park. Oh, no, you can't do that. So we have to hope that we dedicated enough property, okay? We've made the right decisions thus far. And the next step is where your mitigation comes in for Mill Street. At this particular step, there's no rational nexus that gets me to be able to give you justification to tell them they have to improve the light at Franklinville, okay? There's justification, says they had to prove Franklin, and they have to prove the light at their driveway because they have level service issues they need to mitigate there, okay? They put it in the report, they agreed to it, my memo says it, and they agreed to make the improvements, okay? So, that's it done here. But the Mill part, it's very difficult for me to give you guys a solid platform to stand on to make improvements on Mill Street right now with this application.
I just have a quick statement.
Sure.
I understand your conclusion and make 100% logic. But when do we decide they're gonna do something on Mill Street? Because the application beforehand was, well, it's only the storage, it's only the pharmacy, yeah, it's only the Wawa, at one point.
Yeah, alright.
And then to have a flaw in their traffic study. That was flawed. Now there was a new one with the bridge, the board didn't see that. So, there's like little red flags that have been generated throughout these hearings.
Right, which is, which is the reason why we need to make sure that we put some protections in for ourselves. Because at the end of the day, you're at the limit right now, okay? But the other side of it is, is so are they. They're like, okay, we've done, you know, we've done, we're right at that precipice where it's kinda hard for them to do too much more as well because they just, like Mr. Conti said, it doesn't make any sense to rebuild this twice. Hence the discussion about, I don't know if I need a right turn or a left turn lane, I don't wanna make the decision till I got the right information in so I get this done right once. The same thing goes for Mill Street. I think that the intersection of Franklin and Mill's gonna need some improvements. But based on the study that they gave us right now and the traffic impact they have on it, their traffic impact is almost impossible for me to measure and say, oh, you added five new cars there, you have to fix that turn. So, they did add, they did add minimal, I don't really, until I know this, the traffic count at, you know, on Mill, know what's really happening over there, it's very, very difficult for me. But the other side, guys, is, is it fair for us to say, no, no, you can't proceed forward with your project because the bridge is out? So, this is a challenge for you. This is, this is the question that you have to have in your mind is, you know, and I don't know what the rules are about this, I think the attorneys need to probably have a chat over this and see, but all said and done, from my point of view, it's very simple. Will you do an after-study and agree to take your mitigation, you know, based on that after-study? Yes, they break from the record, they will do an after-study, and we will deal with the mitigation at that point. So, so I think that answers the question though, the after-study part. I think the after-study answers your question as far as, well, when?
Alright, I'd like...
Maybe the public would like to answer questions.
Alright, at this time, we'll take questions, questions from the public. Only questions, no comments right now. Anything? No?
Yeah.
Mr. Franciantoni?
What exactly are you proposing? First of all, you're the towns...
Yes.
Engineer. So what are you proposing? We widen Franklin Avenue at this point?
I'm not proposing anything. I'm proposing that we wait until we have an accurate traffic study with accurate data and that we agree with the improvements thus far that they're offering on, okay? And make room for other improvements to happen in the future.
What are they offering? I'm franking, what are they offering?
They're realigning the vertical alignment, they're doing a very expensive fix, okay? The section on Franklin that they have identified as hazardous and needing adjustment is a vertical alignment issue, very expensive to fix. They stepped up to the plate and said they're gonna do it.
Now, what are they, are they...
They're gonna lower the road about, in inches?
Are they widening at that...
It's a lot.
Are they widening Franklin at that point? From Mill Street to the traffic light?
Oh, Franklin will still be four lanes through there, except that they're gonna add either a D cell lane or a left turn lane, or I'm not 100% sure what the board's discretion is on that. But there is gonna be some type of lane reconfiguration at their driveway.
I told you all at the beginning, I answered a simple question. Are they widening Franklin Avenue? Are they taking six or eight feet of their property to widen Franklin Avenue? That's a simple question.
They're dedicating 10 feet, and you're gonna give me a D cell lane or a left turn lane if I want it, right? One or the other.
Yes.
Yes, the answer to your question is yes. They're going to do some amount of widening on Franklin Street.
Alright, words mean something. You said they're dedicating. In this part of the construction...
They're dedicating and they're widening.
Are they actually going to widen it?
Yes.
From where, from Mill Street to where?
No, not from Mill Street. At the site, at the location of their site driveway.
Which is specifically where? Can you show us where?
It's right, it's right here? Here's their main, here's their new signalized driveway.
That's where they're widening.
In the vicinity of this driveway, either we're gonna get a left turn lane cut in, or we're gonna get a right turn lane cut in.
What you just pointed is the traffic light, proposed traffic light?
Right here, new traffic light.
Okay. To the right of that, are they widening?
About to here.
Are they widening that part from the light?
About, they'll widen probably in the vicinity of 90 to 130 feet from that, from this location here.
How wide?
Approximately 12 feet.
Alright, that's a definite, not dedicating or proposing.
In addition to that, they're also dedicating 10 feet along the entire frontage for future widening if it's needed.
That, that...
So they're doing both. They're doing widening at the driveway, and they're dedicating property.
So are they gonna widen it eight feet and dedicate another 12 feet, you said?
No, 10 feet. They're dedicating 10 feet along their entire site frontage on both Franklin and Mill. Am I correct about this?
Yes.
Okay.
They're widening the 10 feet with the construction of the Wawa at that point.
No, they're dedicating 10, oh boy.
Yeah, well, you know, that's why they're dedicating...
It's okay, it's okay, no, 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 it's understandable, it's understandable, okay? At this time, at this time, they have dedicated. In other words, they said, we're moving our property line back 10 more feet. So if we need to do widening, or if someone else needs to do widening, that property is now available for another, another lane on the road.
Okay.
So that's the first step. Now the second step to answer your question is, are they widening the road? And at the site driveway, where the signal is, there is going to be widening. It'll extend approximately 110 to 130 feet either north or south of that signalized intersection.
Okay. You said they're not widening it. No. They're proposing or they're dedicating it, you know? In the construction, are they actually going to widen Franklin Avenue wider? I don't know if the board understands it, but I think you had it correct.
We're good?
Yes.
Is it clear?
Yes, because a left-hand turn lane heading north may be more important than a D cell lane heading south. Until we get that clear, there's gonna be some widening, but we're not sure on which, north or south lane which is gonna get widened.
And if, and just, you know...
They said, they said they can't take it because the park, the park, you can't take it from there.
That 10 feet would come out of their property. But a left-hand turn lane heading north could, their property could accommodate that. They could shift the roadway over to make a left-hand turn lane. If that's more important than a D cell going in the other direction. But all the property would come out of their property.
I'm giving my credentials to him because he just said it first.
Or not sure yet.
Alright. Are there any other questions from the public?
Is there any, are you making any allowance on Mill Street in the event that you might have to widen that as well?
Yes.
You know?
They dedicated 10 additional feet along their entire frontage on Mill Street.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Alright, so I'll close the portion, and I'd like to have someone to make a motion that we go in...
Well, before we do that though, we have to open it up in public now for comments, okay?
Alright, are there any...
Try not to be repetitious.
Yes, please.
So now you're gonna be sworn in, comments sworn in.
Alright, any of the members in the public have any comments to make? Mr. Franciantoni?
Now we're gonna swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? Will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Alright, I think we're all live here long enough and we know the existing problems there. When the drugstore and the storage unit was brought up, they said you're gonna have to take 10 feet of there. They agreed, they said the next project you do. Well, this is the next project, and they have a manly, aren't doing it. And again, you know the old saying, if you don't study history, you're doomed to repeat the mistakes that are past. Now, you know, I come to 99% of these meetings and all, I've listened to the experts on Essex Park, okay? We have sufficient parking. Oh, there's more than enough parking, you know, guest parking, no problem, all that. Well, I've lived in Belleville 50, 51 years, okay? And I'm out at night, I have my lodge mat, they close 10 o'clock, I'm around town all the time. Go look at the golf course. There's 20 to 40 cars from Essex Park parked in the golf course parking lot every single night. There's not enough parking. Let me bring you to Main Street Mall. The Main Street Mall was Vice President of Chamber of Commerce, we approached that mall because we said it's going to destroy our beautiful Washington Avenue downtown area, which was a wonderful downtown, thriving downtown business. They didn't have enough parking. They were gonna do a Grand Union and 25 satellite stores. All the merchants went there, we got enough people to oppose them, and they finally agreed to cut it down to only 19 stores. And even with the 19 stores, there was seven parking spaces short. So, but we agreed, okay, seven is no problem. Not even a year later, I'm doing the job in Rutherford, I get off 21, and I see the bulldozers. And they added the six stores to the south and took all that parking. So now there were 40-something parking, and you had before you an application. Like you was here last week. Now, they don't have, they have a parking problem down there. This is all the experts, very high-priced experts who know everything. The real experts that we, you look around the corner, Patty, you know the problems over there. These experts are paid by the developer. So, what do you get? And I'm surprised with Mr. Jar, we're paying him, and he seems to be a developer's expert, in my opinion, you know? So, I'm asking you, please, let's, I, I love this project. I'm anything but residential, but I love this project. I love Wawas. And let me tell you something. When it says it's not a destination, I have Summer Home in Pennsylvania, about 11 miles away, they put a quick check. And we love this sandwich where we go. We go out of our way to go there. So it is a destination thing. I don't have to go there, it's a delicate destination, a mile and a half down the road. But we go the 11 miles because we like the quick check. And the same way with Wawas. So, you know, these are real life stories. You people living in Belleville, you know the problems. Please, I'm asking you to make it a definite condition. You've got to, Mill Street dog road, so we don't need the county. That, we gotta have it done now. They're doing, and again, this bothers my mind, like Mr. Conti says, as a contractor, I just don't understand it. You're gonna be doing the work anyway, you've got all this equipment, do it now. If you make a mistake, if you make a mistake, it's not that extra money it's costing you. But if you do work, you're earned on the side of benefits to the town. We have this. Because we got a lot of other projects in Belleville, and Bloomfield isn't done yet. Whatever's built, a pipe parkway down the Memorial Drive there, they're not even 40% ready yet, and we got traffic jams. So please, make this a definite condition. They have to do it now while the construction is. You said when they built the two, they approved the two units, this is the third unit. We don't know what's going in at that big block, and you got another half of that development that's gonna be developed. Let's do it now, and, because it's not gonna be done in the future as past history has shown us in Belleville. Let's not make the mistake again. You put conditions, you got a site, a triangle, you're not allowed to have shrubs more than three feet high. Go look at all the projects you approved, they're 10 feet high. So, nothing complies with it. Let's do the right thing now, please. I ask you, as residents of Belleville, you're supposed to be a planning board, let's do responsible planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Sheldon?
Do I need to be sworn in first?
Yes, you do, sir.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? Will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments. I've listened very carefully to tonight's testimony and Mr. Jar's discussion about the developer giving conceding 10 feet of his property line. Seems to be, to my, in my opinion, kind of a crafty lawyer's argument in that they're willing to concede 10 feet of their space, but there's really no commitment at this point, who would actually do the widening? I mean, there's the contingency here that down the road, years to come, if we discover that the bottleneck is, that is one of the worst intersections of all of Belleville, those of us who live here know all too well. But if, if this project, once it's fully realized, and we still don't know what's gonna go in that large green area, that's either whether, if it becomes a large putting green or a dark park, then I guess this won't be an issue. But in all likelihood, that's gonna be a major development attracting a lot of destination vehicles. I, it seems to me that what the developer's trying to do is dodge any responsibility in widening the road. He's going, if necessary, he will give 10 feet of space, but he doesn't want to make that investment now when we have this singularly unique opportunity to fix this historic problem that is that intersection of Franklin and Mill. And in previous testimony, I made a kind of a lousy joke, but I said, one of the main problems at that intersection is the little part of Mill Street that leads out of the park. Because that is only a two-lane road. And if the people that are coming out of the park to get to that intersection, if anyone has to make a left turn, they impede everyone behind them. That's why, as Patty mentioned earlier, you sometimes have backups in the middle of the day, all the way to Union Avenue, all the way through the park for almost a mile. And it's because you don't have the right traffic flow at that intersection. I've asked in previous testimony if possibly the county could give one other little strip of land, that little section of Branchford Park. I know, I realize there may be laws, green acre protection here, but I made the bad joke at the time that maybe Joe DiVincenzo would be willing to give us that little extra bit of land so that when he goes to fundraisers at Naninas, he himself isn't always tied up at that intersection. I think if the right appeal is made to the powers that be, this is that tiny little bit of land at the, that terminal end of Branchford Park, if just 10 feet of that park could be given to Belleville to expand that roadway, that would go a long way to finally alleviating the traffic ties up at that intersection. But I plead to the board again, you've heard all this discussion tonight about road expansion if the need arises. You need to make sure that the developer is obligated to facilitate this expansion if the need arises. I don't want the township, five years from now, 10 years from now, to realize we need to do something and it now becomes taxpayer responsibility. Or we have to go to court and spend millions of dollars litigating against the developer to try to make good on this alleged 10-foot property line concession. So, something I wish, I hope all of you think through thoroughly before you grant any approval to this application. Thank you.
Any other comments? Alright, seeing any, I'll close this portion.
Counselors are right to sum up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time. I'm going to be brief because we've spent a good amount of time here. I think it's important to note that this is a permitted use that we're here this evening asking for site point approval for. This is not a use variance, this is part of the redevelopment plan. We're doing what your redevelopment plan requests, and that's what we're here asking for. The only variances that are a issue at all have to do with signage. You've heard testimony from the, the testimony from the experts that were here this evening as to the ability to grant the variances for signage without any substantial detriment to either the zoning plan of the city or the redevelopment plan or anything of that nature because frankly, the requests that are being made for this signage excesses are de minimis. The elephant in the room that we're talking about tonight seems to be with regard to the traffic. It's important to recognize that this project, the Wawa that we're proposing, It's important to recognize that this project, the Wawa that we're proposing, is not creating the traffic problem. It already exists. It's not something that needs to be solved solely by Wawa, or solely by this application, or solely by this applicant. It needs to be done, and we're, we're here to work with you. This project won't work if the, if the traffic doesn't flow. It simply won't. And we're not stupid, we realize that. But we're not, I think Mr. Jar's testimony was right on point. It makes sense to wait. I mean, I apologize, there's nothing that we could have done. The bridge was closed, our traffic counts may have been changed as a result of that, but there's really nothing that we could have done. We can't simulate what would have occurred. We have to wait. So, I agree with Mr. Jar's assertion or suggestion that we go forward, that we agree to work with the township, to come up with something, once the bridge actually opens, that we redo the counts. If we see that there is something that requires additional work, that we will work with the township to do that. I think it makes the most sense, also in agreement with Mr. Jar's testimony, that we wait to decide what to do with that additional space. Because it may make more sense to have a left turn lane. It may make more sense to do the right turn, uh, digression lane. But we don't know that yet. And we're willing to do either one of those. We're not saying no. We're saying, "It makes sense to do it, but we don't know which one." And we're here to work with both, we still have to work with the county, obviously, and we have to work with the township, and we're willing to do that. But to delay this application, or to make a statement that we have to do something at this point in time, I think is premature. With regard to Mill Street, again, you have the testimony of your expert, not just ours, that says that by taking down the railroad abutments, we're clearing up the line of sight. We've already dedicated the 10 feet. But let's not be at a rush to do something on Mill Street that may or may not work. There's no empirical evidence that says if we were to widen Mill Street, that it would be the panacea that solves all the problems. We can't do anything about what happens with Naninas or the two lanes across the road from Franklin. That's not ours. We don't own it, we can't do anything about it. We have situations that, that's difficult, we understand that. But we're not running away, we're not, we have to come back to you with this other 10 acres. We're not, we're not running, we're not saying, "Give us this and then the hell with you guys." You know, we're coming back, we've got to work with you. So, I understand Mr. Jar's comments, I appreciate them, and I think they make the most sense. Grant us this preliminary site, site plan approval and final site plan approval we're asking for this evening. Grant us the variances for signage, and then we'll continue to work with both Mr. Hertz and Mr. Jar with regard to both the county approvals and the approvals that are coming forward with the rest of this project, so that we are all happy at the end of this development. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, this board would like to have a legal conference, so we'll take a 10-minute break. Yes, I need a motion from someone. All in favor?
All right.
I love this meeting back into order. We went to private discussions with our attorney to discuss some legal issues on land planners. And at this time, I guess I'm going to open up for discussion with the board.
Madam Chair, if I may just, I neglected to make one point during my summation, if I could, if you don't, if you don't mind.
Sure.
There was a question with regard to the security at the site. I've spoken to the applicant. What they're willing to do is, they'd be willing to sit down with the township police department to negotiate a safety plan that would be to the acceptance of the police department.
That would be wonderful.
I'll make one comment. We discussed security in the back, so you just addressed that. So that's, that's, personally, I don't have a problem approving the project tonight. We realize that there's going to be ongoing discussions with future development at the site, and we're not even really sure what we should do on Mill Street and Franklin Avenue tonight, because we haven't had enough study on it. I don't see the purpose of holding up the Wawa applicant, which has minimal impact, probably on an already bad intersection. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm okay moving forward with everybody in the room realizing with future development will come, you know, eventual traffic flow issues that are going to have to be addressed at that time. To address them tonight, to some degree, we're not being fair to the applicant, because Wawa hasn't created this traffic, and Wawa probably isn't going to negatively impact it that greatly. So, as far as I'm concerned, I feel comfortable knowing that going forward, they have to, you know, this developer has to come back before us and discuss the rest of the development. That's just my, my comment.
I'd like to make a comment as far as the traffic study, and how we proceed from this. To my understanding, Mr. Hertz, you have not been included in any of the meetings at the county, which you were, it was agreed to at one point?
That's correct.
That's correct. That, that's not a showing this board or this town any type of courtesy. I think what we need to do is somewhat talk about merging.
I'm sorry, Patty.
We need to work together, and there has to be some sort of solution for these problems that we are developing here. So I hope in the future, Mr. Hertz and our traffic, Mr. Jar, are included in these meetings, and we can come up with a solution before the next plan of development comes about.
Just for purposes of clarification, there hasn't been a formal meeting with the county, so-
They've never gone before the county?
No, ma'am.
Never gone before the county in a meeting?
He's, he's been sworn, maybe he can-
Yes. We, since the last plane board meeting, we have not had a meeting with the county. We had meetings prior to that, and at that point, we agreed to invite all of your professionals. We haven't been down to them to present a plan since the last plane board meeting that we had.
But before that-
Before that-
-it was discussed as far as the pharmacy, that our engineer would be a part of those meetings.
And we fully intend to do that, we're going forward. We haven't submitted it into the county, and at the last hearing, we agreed to include your professionals, but we haven't been back to them for a formal meeting since then.
That's not the last meeting. We're talking the prior applications.
No, that's, that's-
They were supposed to be included and have never been. So you're telling me since inception, you've never had a meeting?
I'm telling you, since the last time we were here for the self-storage and pharmacy, we have not had a meeting.
When did you get approval for the road changes and the signal back?
We don't have approval, we haven't submitted to the county before.
Oh, it's just-
It's preliminary, because we're still working on some things down, correct. I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks, we fully submitted to the county for that review, I will make sure that the board professionals are copied on that submission, and we will continue to keep them apprised. Because again, Mill's your street, Franklin's theirs, we want to, we want to make sure everybody's looking at it together, so we get the right solution.
So that's, that's going to be, I think, mandatory for us to go on to anything, that there is cooperation with the town, our engineers, and we know what we can do to fix these problems that were occurring, for our benefit and your benefit. Does it work when there's problems?
We welcome the input.
Any other, anyone else have any other comments? Eileen, just, you welcome, please, here.
Mr. Hertz and the township's traffic-
I would think that would be obligatory and not optional, am I correct?
I'm not suggesting that it's optional or mandatory, man. We're saying that we welcome it, we want to cooperate, we want them to be involved.
So it's the understanding they will be involved?
Absolutely.
And we will hopefully come up with some sort of consensus of what is necessary for our traffic problems?
That's our hope.
Any other comments or discussion? Nope. Yes, Mr. Walsh?
And as far as the traffic, you will be back to discuss traffic with the after-study once the Bloomfield Bridge is open?
Yes, sir.
Say, five months, six months?
Hopefully, within July or six months.
Well, I, just, does, clarification, when you say come back here for another hearing, or do you want us to meet with your professionals to discuss the results of the traffic?
With our professionals.
Yeah.
Just to meet with the professionals, so again, ideally, it's-
That's perfect, thank you, yeah.
Just, go ahead, come on. This, working with, working together with our group, this is not contingent on the next project, but as a continuation of the current project. In other words, we're not waiting for another pad to, to be proposed.
For the, for the next traffic study? No, no, as soon as the bridge opens, the new, another traffic report will be submitted to the township, it will work with them.
All right, is there any other further discussion or entertaining motion?
Well, I, before we entertain a motion, I want to just ask counsel if he should reiterate for us what it is that we're exactly voting on, and what stipulations are in it in regards to security and any other future traffic issues?
The application's invited for preliminary and final site plan approval, and for the variances for the signs. And then the conditions that I've heard the applicant agreed to, if the board wants them, would be cooperation with their traffic engineers and our traffic engineers at all phases and all meetings, including local and county, and that there will also be cooperation with the police department on issues of all security. And then the board will determine the issues of dedication and widening.
The dedication will be on their subdivision map, correct?
That's done.
Yeah. So, when they file that map with the county, you'll have your additional 10 feet on both frontages. And as far as, when you submit to the county, what I'd like to see is, as soon as you submit to the county, we have, we set up a meeting where we all go to the county and take care of things, okay? So, the county doesn't approve it without any of our input.
Yeah, that's definitely mandatory, we need that.
And I think you, I'm sorry to interject, but I think you have a third condition where you want us to do a subsequent traffic report after the bridge is open.
And that you'll do with our experts.
I'll make sure it's done.
Yes.
At this point, I'll make a motion to move a vote on the site plan approval.
Do we have a section?
And the variances?
Oh, yeah, and all the variances that accompany the application.
What the conditions that you've talked about?
The conditions that our attorney has outlined to you. We have a second?
Do we have a section? I said it. All the board, please.
This is in Obrada. Yes. Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Shore?[1784.62]